Good evening and welcome to this December 20th meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. This is a legislative meeting where we'll be voting and I'm sure we'll be discussing also that welcome this evening. The first thing we do is have a roll call. So Brenda Wolf, the city clerk, would you call the roll to establish a quorum?
Mayor Morse.
Present.
Commissioner Hassel.
Present.
Commissioner Reddy.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners. The quorum of three has been met.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to have you all join the commission in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The item four on the agenda would be commissioner comments. Do commissioners have anything to pass along?
I want to mention one thing. We've had for years this water bill donation program for social services and the amount of donations going down, part of that may be because if you've got an electronic bill, you need to go to the city website and actually sign up for it. And of course, my ambition on that always was that if we could get everybody that gets a water bill to just donate $1 every month to social services, it would massively increase the amount of money that they have to allocate. So I encourage you all to do that and you're already paying, I think, a dollar or something extra on your water bill to cover the, you know, dig save. So, you know, it shouldn't be a real pain to add another dollar. A lot cheaper than a $5 cup of, you know, coffee that we get at the coffee shop. So please consider that for the new year.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is our last meeting for this year and we won't have one again until January 3rd. So hopefully, if you're traveling, be safe. We're expecting really dangerous weather the next few days, so be cautious and be prepared as you head out or if you have family coming in. Merry Christmas for those of you that are having family and celebrating Christmas or any of the holidays that you do celebrate and Happy New Year and hopefully we win the Sugar Bowl as well. All of that in one week in the next few days before we see you again next year. Thank you.
Well, there's a lot going on. This is a busy time, where everyone's trying, every organization's trying to get their, all their work done here right before the holidays. So it is a busy time. So thank you for taking time to come this evening. I would say that tomorrow at noon, the city commission is meeting with local, the local legislative delegation here. Actually, there's lunch for those commissioners and legislators to talk about the city's interests in this legislative session. And so, the public is invited to, I'm not sure it's going to be on TV, it's just more informal, we'll be out on the main floor, but just to let you know that that's taking place. Without any further comments, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there consent items that the commission wishes to address before we move to approve them?
Yes. I'd like to move item I, three, the law board appointments, to the general agenda. And then just a comment on appointments on I to E. This is the historic resource board. This is a board where we've had some controversies in the past with and read through the application, nothing against the applicant, I just need a real strong, good feeling that we're not going to have issues again and I just don't know enough, so I'll be voting no on that.
I'll offer to the law.
Item G4, I'm going to vote no on that. That's the new contract for the city manager and I agree with John on the historic board thing. I need some more data before voting for that.
I have one question on item F, which is the selection committee for the five-year program with the regional airport. Brandon, I saw you somewhere there.
You did what? You have questions?
It was a question.
So you want, yeah?
No, just a question. Here he goes.
Sure.
So I was looking through there and it says it's a five-year contract and it says something about it's a retainer-based deal plus they would be fees for whatever projects they help manage, stuff like that. But I never saw what the retainer thing was. Are we going to be paying $20,000 a year, $120,000 a year? What's the deal?
There's no cost to it. It's just going to be a master contract that comes back to you and it's just saying that those are the projects, if funding happens, that will negotiate with the FAA for funding and then we'll also negotiate with Olson to do those projects. Then if those projects have funding, then a separate task order with the amount for the A and E services will be addressed at that point.
Okay.
So it's literally just saying that Olson represents the airport for the next five years under A and E services and that they're, and we're able to do those projects that were listed in the RFQ if funding comes available.
So they're not getting a bunch of money for just being on call or anything?
No cost to this whatsoever.
Okay. It said that, said it was a retainer thing, but I didn't ever saw it, so that's why I saw no amount. There's no amount.
There's no amount and you guys will see that contract January 3rd.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other commissioner comments? Okay, thank you. With no more comments, is there a motion? Oh, public comment. Is anyone interested in making a comment on the items on the consent agenda? If so, would you please come forward? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment portion and look to the commission for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda except for item I, three, which has been moved to the general agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Except, or to move item I, three, to the general agenda. With that, Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, on everything except item G4, which is no, and I to E, which is no.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes, except no on I to E.
Mayor Morse? I vote yes to approve. Motion carries five to zero with the exception of, with the exception of G4, which carries four to one, and I to E, which carries three to two.
Did you say G4? Okay.
I think that's right.
Okay. Oh, I see. Yes, okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay. And we have an item that has, oh, you moved to move the appointments to the general agenda, not the consent agenda, which is typically what we do. Okay. All right, fine. So the next item?
So typically, we do that. Did you want it at the end of the general or were we moved it to the number six?
So he means consent agenda?
Number six.
Number six. It is the consent agenda. So now it's?
No, no. These items moved from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
That's what I read.
Okay. All right. So items that have been removed from the consent agenda are the topic now.
Right.
Okay. And those would be the law board appointments. And I have nominated Betty Mattingly Ebert to the citizen-at-large term, Deborah Rodenbach Schaub to the citizen-at-large term, myself to the rotating city commissioner term, and Commissioner Reddy to the city commissioner term. So with that, your discussion, please.
Yes. I think, you know, with these appointments, this is a chance for the city to get four on there, a majority on the law board. So it gives us a chance to actually get some budget scrutiny and hold the line on the mill levy, but we need all four votes. Frankly, we lose one, we may lose the whole vote. With Betty, I'm very confident with her that we'll get that good scrutiny. With Deborah, it's not that I don't have confidence, I just have an extreme amount of confidence in one other person who did apply. And then on the two commissioner appointments, I frankly fear with those appointments, we will more than likely get a mill levy increase. So again, this is our opportunity with four appointments and I think we need to make sure we get some folks on there that'll give us some good budget scrutiny.
Okay. Are there other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think in the past, we've had four commissioners on there also from the, from the city, including Mike Dodson at one point and I believe Craig Beardsley was also appointed at one point and a few others, a few others I just can't remember during my tenure on law board. And as with the city budget, the budget gets discussed at length before it is agreed upon and oftentimes, it's been a seven-zero vote or maybe a six-one vote or something of that sort. But typically, it's after plenty of discussion. So it shouldn't be assumed that the commissioners appointed by the city and by the county did not have a grand discussion or an in-depth discussion about the budget before agreeing to it, because you have to approve the budget. That's per statute, whether it's the city budget or a law board budget. You have to vote on a budget at some point. And so I think that needs to be said, just because a budget was approved by law board, by our appointments as well as the county appointments, I do believe it was done in good faith as well as a lot of discussion to, so I think the appointments that Commissioner Morse has made or will be changing doesn't mean the budget will change significantly because there's so much discussion that happens within that. So I just wanted to be clear, that budget is a big part of law board discussion and there are so many other pieces that happen, such as hiring a new director, for example, and they do build a consensus. All the times that I've been on law board, there have been budget hawks on there as well. And I would like to think that when you approve a budget, that it was because there was a lot of discussion, cuts, thorough discussion that happened. So I want to be clear about that.
No, I concur with what John said. I don't have anything to add.
Mark?
Well, I'm not convinced that we're going to make a big difference, but every year we bitch and moan about the fact that this law board hands us a bill and says, here, pay this, and the commission always feels like we didn't have enough input. So if we can get four people that we're convinced are going to be budget hawks and such and will pick the second highest police budget presented to them instead of the highest one presented to them, I think it's worth a shot. And if, these appointments are generally for two years, I'm not sure if everyone will be around in two years, but this is our chance to one time try to actually put, we can no longer say after this, this exercise, that the commission didn't have the ability to control the law board budget. If we get four people who we feel strongly are budget people, budget-watching hawk people, and we still can't control the damn thing, then I don't want to hear ever, ever again that the commission doesn't have any input on the thing, because this is our one shot to either prove that idea right or prove that idea wrong. So I'll, I'll vote for Betty because I like her thoughts. Deborah's been a good friend for years, but I don't know where she falls on the spectrum of budget hawk versus like everybody else does and just accepts what, kind of what's recommended. So I'll vote for Deb, but I'll vote against the other ones until we find out who they are, who they suggest.
You'll vote for Deb or Betty or both?
I'm sorry, Betty.
Betty, okay. All right, thank you.
Betty.
Huh? Well, I want to talk.
Well, just for your information, if you would make a motion for each individual appointment as a positive motion, so a motion to approve the appointment of, if you disapprove, say no, so that we, because those are the action items that are in your agenda and take, just to take up each appointment separately rather than trying to do it collectively.
Can we make one motion but then vote on them separately as we go around?
Yeah, that's not clean.
Keep it clean is what she's saying.
Okay.
It'll be on the record, what can you say? I appreciate the opportunity to make these nominations as mayor. Certainly, that is the established pattern, except for this commission and this year and going forward, it would appear. I think we have a really great police department. I appreciate the work that's been done this year to hire a new director and I understand that there are people after that budget, there always are. It has to go first, it has to go in June and the city and the county budgets come later. So it is the lightning rod, I call it, that it has to, and in the end, the city and the county usually end up going to that same percentage of increase. But it is what it is with the majority vote here and, but I am going to be very watchful about cutting that budget. I am not about to be a part of defunding the police at our local level. And so it's important that we all are vigilant to make sure that we have a quality police department. So I would ask for the vote, please.
There's not a motion.
Okay. Who's going to make the motion for?
I'll move to appoint Betty Manley Ebert to the citizen-at-large term.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, do I have to ask for public comment on everyone? No? Okay. I would ask that the city clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I move we appoint Deborah Rodenbach Schwab to a citizen-at-large.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Deborah Rodenbach Schaub as, to the citizen-at-large position on the law board. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner Motta?
No.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
No.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion fails, three to two.
Okay.
I move we appoint Mayor Morse to the rotating city commission term.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mayor Morse for a few more days to the Riley County Law Board. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Motta?
No.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
No.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Motion fails, three to two.
I move we appoint Commissioner Reddy to a city commissioner term.
I'll second.
Mayor, I'm sorry, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
No.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner Motta?
No.
Motion fails, three to two.
I move we appoint Caleb James to a citizen-at-large.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I move we appoint Win Butler to a rotating city commissioner term.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Win Butler to the rotating city commission term.
Can we, can we just pause for a second? What exactly does that mean, rotating city commissioner term? Since Win will be, will be on the city commission for two more years, would he go into the rotating position or into the city commissioner position?
It's, it's not really relevant because it rotates between the county and the city every two years. It's just a term that, for the slot to indicate that after two years, it will go away. It'll go back to the county.
So the rotating term evolved after the city of Ogden pulled out of the representation and funding and so the, every two years, that, that term rotates between the city and county must be an elected official.
Okay. These last two years, it has been on the county filled, designated, and so now it's the flipping, it's rotating and now this coming year, it'll be the fourth position for the city on the law board. Okay, thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second for Win. Is that where we are? And Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
No.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. And another motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Motta to a city commissioner term.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Brenda, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
No.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. We have completed filling the four law board slots and we are now ready to move on to the public hearing. And this evening, this item A is to consider the K-State Foundation request for industrial revenue bonds and tax abatement for Office Park Building Number Three. Jason Hilders, the deputy city manager, is here to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I have a resolution in front of you this evening to consider issuance of IRBs, as you mentioned, along with an abatement. This is building number three in the Office Park adjacent to building two, which the city previously incentivized. This is a four-story building, 80,000 square feet, roughly a $30 million investment, which is the size of the IRB being sought this evening. They're also seeking a 10-year, 100% tax abatement affiliated with the building. There was a cost-benefit analysis completed, that's in your packet as well, which is required not only by our policy but by the state as part of the law. This cost-benefit analysis assumes 250 new jobs to the facility. It also assumed a $30 million additional property tax base. Both of those, I need to call to your attention and I believe the applicant, Greg Lorenz with the foundation, will expand a little bit on the 250 new jobs. The $30 million in additional property tax base is a reflection of what's being invested. I think even Greg will agree that in his data that he's provided you all, the value of that building is probably closer to 10 to 12 million dollars. So that it won't be a $30 million addition to the property tax base, but it is a $30 million investment. But for whatever reason, the analyst went ahead and applied $30 million to the model. It's a, it's, I believe it's an error. I don't know exactly where the Riley County Appraiser is going to come down, but the building next to it that has three stories, they roughly valued it between six and seven million dollars and it has about a $280,000 tax bill every year. And I believe Greg has shared with you all personally, roughly, and has applied for, roughly a $365,000 annual tax bill, which totals about a $3.6 million abatement. If it was a $30 million building, it would be about a $30 million abatement. So that's the discrepancy in the report and I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. IRBs require a public hearing and as we mentioned previously, both the issuance of the IRBs and the abatement are what we're holding this process for. Once construction is complete, that's really when the abatement process starts. We will have to come back before you all as a governing body with the IRB and abatement action items in two years. They'll be in the form of, of an ordinance and they actually start the process and kick in the 10-year window for any abatement. If you recall, we've done these on a number of projects, even with a sales tax exemption, you're typically always issuing some sort of resolution upfront stating your intent and then once a project is complete, whether it's Metalark, whether it's Bev Hub or it's Ben Manko or GTM in the past, Off Florence, Civics Plus, you've come back after construction and that's really when you solidify the relationship and you solidify the issuance and abatement process. So just a heads up, tonight's is really getting it started, roughly a year and a half, two years before they're complete, they'll come back once they're done with that process if this is approved. We also have policies dealing with issuance of IRBs and tax abatements. Both of these were crafted in 2003. There's a lot of consistencies between the policies. Job growth and creation are a major factor in both of our policies, also looking for that anticipated significant investment and that overall economic benefit back to the community. Our policies are set up in a way to where we typically sit down with applicants, look at the number of jobs they're going to create, generate a development agreement, generate an ROI, a return on that investment, and we come to you all with really a full agenda of action items and documented materials. Our discussions with the foundation led us to an approach that didn't mirror our policies nor our past practices, but simply to come to you all seeking that abatement and the issuance of these IRBs. Our policies anticipate agreements, they anticipate a return on investment that we would have conducted and it all would have really centered around mainly the investment in the property and the jobs created and we would have, you know, put that incentive package together. That's not happening tonight. Again, another item I feel like I need to point out to you all in terms of how our policies and our past practices have been. If there are any questions and relative to any of those past practices, happy to answer those for you, but I do want to draw a distinction between what you're considering tonight and what you've considered in the past. We do have a nuclear relationship with the K-State Foundation. They're, they're a part of a corporation that Ron and I sit on. We have quarterly meetings with the knowledge-based economic development that are a member of the city, the chamber, the foundation, the university, Potawatomi County. We have multiple partners and there's just a team effort towards economic development. When we get prospects into the community, they're very much at the table. And as I mentioned, we, we have a development agreement and we have incentivized past projects. That's not out of the realm or out of the norm, but in that circumstance, we did have a development agreement and we did have jobs that they needed to create in order to leverage those incentives. Their relationship with us, though, goes, and it's evolved. When I first started with the city, our relationship with the foundation is nowhere near where it is today. And, and in the last 20 years, they've developed all over the community and have a research park and an office park. They're a major player when it comes to what's happening at the campus, what's happening in our community, leveraging talent. They have a great portfolio. I'm sure you've all seen it and heard it and you're going to see it again tonight. It's truly an asset to our community and the university and they leverage a tremendous amount for our community. We want to acknowledge that. We want to further that relationship. We've mentioned North Campus and the Edge District a lot and we will continue to do that. Their, their relationship with us and the community and the, and university are going to continue and we're excited about that. They've been at the table and they will continue to be at the table. And it's something we recognize and we acknowledge. They're heavily involved and they have been. They're heavily involved and they have been for some time. Greg and I and a number of other people with the foundation and the university and the community, as far back as two thousand and fourteen, were starting to talk about North Campus corridor and what that could evolve to. Even at the time, we had President Myers and, well, it was, President Schultz, my bad, initiate that process and then President Myers and now President Linton's involved. You've just got all that history and all that momentum. They're very much a part of the studies we put together for the five thousand jobs that really led to us talking about investing in these corridors heavily and creating an environment where this could take place. So I don't want to shortchange the relationship. I don't want to shortchange the, the relationships and the efforts that the, the foundation has put into our community. It's significant. The approach is unique. The request is something that we haven't seen all that often or ever. It's a request just carte blanche for ten years at a hundred percent on the abatement. The background information does suggest a net positive impact to the taxing jurisdictions and I believe it will be. It's, it's something that along the way we suggested maybe we should track that a little bit and make sure there's an accountability, but there's no agreement attached to this item. And it, it is, it is very simple what you're being asked to consider. There's no complexities to it. They're looking for that ten-year abatement on the property to allow them to develop and move forward with their leasing plan. Again, just in summary, they are a community partner and they're advancing the mission of K-State and the economic development landscape of Manhattan, Kansas. They're poised to invest and further this Office Park vision, which they've had for a number of years. They have an entire plan along Kimball Avenue that stretches down North Manhattan that that's very comprehensive. And again, they're seeking that ten-year abatement with this building. I have no doubt they're committed to building out the edge and with a variety of land uses and jobs and economic impacts and benefits back to this community. Again, we partner with them. I just reiterate, it's a unique request and it's not anticipated in our existing policies. It does give me the opportunity to tell you all, I do believe we need to update our policies. It's been since two thousand and three, twenty eighteen, we did come meet with the commission about this and there was some momentum we, we built then. Unfortunately, the world turned upside down in nineteen and twenty, but we need to get back to this and we do have some topics we'd like to discuss with you all at your retreat on this. And so a process moving forward to update our policies. But having said that, the oh-three policy does not anticipate this. It does give you the flexibility to waive any of the pieces and parts of that policy that you, as a governing body, is at your discretion. So you do have that authority and you would need to look at these policies and make concessions and waivers in order to move forward and in order to be consistent with what those policies that have been adopted. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point on the city side. I know the foundation has a presentation, both Greg Williams and Lorenz are in the audience as well as possibly others from their team, ready to speak, but I'd give you that opportunity to answer any questions for the city staff at this point.
I want to ask one that's related to the Edge District and that's the status of the lease on the fire station?
We are making progress. We are in the, I believe Katie, you've shared documents with legal staff at K-State. We met with K-State this fall. We have tentatively talked about remaining, making some exterior improvements that meet everybody's, meets the eye test, both the university and the foundation, giving us some time to relocate our training side of the house. We are in the process of securing that land off Amherst. That's finally materializing. We have talked to you all in an executive session about that, but we do believe we'll be back in front of you soon to secure that site. So I, things are moving. We anticipate this spring actually addressing this in comprehensive nature and, and amending that lease. That current lease expires in two thousand and thirty-four. There's some provisions in that lease that aren't very beneficial for us or the university. It's a one-page handwritten document that's very tough to read and we'd like to formalize that relationship and they're willing to go several decades for us to occupy that space.
Okay, so we can sum up and say the general direction right now is to keep that fire station?
Correct.
And it won't be destroyed as part of the Edge thing because that's an important thing for me.
Yep, yep, correct.
Who's, who's going to be responsible for the water, utilities, stormwater system, all of these things that go in there? Is it the, does that fall on the city responsibility or the foundation responsibility?
It, it would be the foundations. It would be like any other development in the community. We are partnering on stormwater improvements, which again, it's up to Greg and Greg, if they want to elaborate on that, but we've had those documents in front of you all for design and for construction. It's off-site, it's obviously north of them, but it's even in partnership with the university on Ag land to create storm detention. It'll obviously benefit this site, but that improvement benefits a lot of people in our community. It puts a, it relieves a ton of pressure on that box at TCB and Marlette that ends up typically filling that Marlette channel and running out to the northeast and eventually into the river. Those improvements are significant. We have agreed to participate at a third and they'll, they'll continue to materialize in the next several months.
And just to be clear, as far as IRBs, that property is already exempt from sales tax?
They are of a tax status that through the state of Kansas, yes, they can leverage the sales tax exemption on the construction.
And so that's not what we're?
They are not asking us for that, no.
And so that's already off the table because they already are exempt anyway from the city side?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I want to ask one other thing. The resolution doesn't really lock in anything, right? For two years?
Correct. It's a resolution of intent. It, it's going to allow them to re-approach you in two years, once done with construction, to issue those IRBs via ordinance and lock in the abatement process. Sarah Steele with Gilmore Bell is on the phone. Sarah, if you'd like to elaborate on anything there, we would, we would appreciate it.
No, it does, it does provide that the intent of the city is in two years to issue industrial revenue bonds for this project. The property tax exemption is the primary benefit that the foundation is seeking. There is not relevant here, but an associated sales tax exemption that may be sought on, on certain industrial revenue bonds that you may recall us approaching the commission in the past. So in this case, it strictly is an expression of the city's intention to consider the ordinance at a meeting approximately two years from now.
Okay, the reason I ask that question, I did get some emails, people reading the old policy, as you already said, this is sort of outside the boundaries here and there were just some concerns about is this a unfair advantage to local business, especially if the new office building, if people relocate from other parts of town there, that's not really creating two-hundred-and-fifty new jobs and that's what the concern was. So, you know, I don't need to get into details on that, but I don't have a problem with, you know, the intent because we can cross the Ts later because some people are concerned there should be some clawbacks in this tax abatement thing, which we've done on others, but we've got a couple of years to work that out.
Yeah, I have more questions, but I'll wait till the, their presentation as well. Thank you.
Okay, other commissioner comments or questions to Jason Hilders?
Okay. Thank you, Jason. I'll bet you're back up here pretty soon. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask if Greg Willem or Greg Lorenz, do you have a presentation or comments you'd like to make as the, making this proposal?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. So there's nobody out there that doesn't know me. I'm Greg Williams, I'm president, CEO of the K-State Foundation. My colleague Greg Lorenz over here to my right, so you're going to get the tag team tonight and appreciate the opportunity to present. We appreciate the other citizens for being here, to hear this message and lend their support. So, Jason, I don't know how to run this as a formal, is there a clicker here?
Yeah. It's the mouse. Yep.
Do you want to make it full screen?
Yeah.
Instead of?
If you've learned anything about me, my eyes won't see anything smaller than eighteen font, so. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this vision and I know each of you have seen this individually and so we'll try to be brief and go through this, but for the benefit of the citizens who are watching or here listening, I think it will be helpful to have the context for what we're asking for and why we think this is a compelling opportunity for our city and the consideration before you. So the Edge Master Plan has evolved greatly over many, many years. A decade ago, we started with very small accumulations of some property and very humble beginnings of doing some projects and things that we thought could be good for our city, good for our university and good for our state. Well, it's evolved to ten years down the road. We stand before you with an official branded marquee economic development park, very similar to what you see around the country at NC State, Purdue, Nebraska, other university communities that have taken the opportunity to leverage the intellectual horsepower, the talent and the assets and where they have excellence in their university to benefit their community and their state. So we're really excited about this vision. The Edge Master Plan now has really grown and so the images and the things that we're going to show you is part of that evolution. One of the other things I would say before I go to the next image, the Edge Master Plan encompasses kind of three themes of our economic development and innovation parks. So it's around sports and entertainment, around health and wellness, and around innovation and economic development around advanced agriculture and biosecurity. And so you're going to see those three themes in the assets that are in the park. So this is a rendering of our vision. This is a combination of current state, but also future state. So you have to, you have to think back and are present and look into the future a little bit as you look at this. What you're seeing here is, is probably about a third of this collection of property and assets that we now call the Edge District. So the Edge District has evolved from a collection of small plots, about five different locations, to now encompass a five-hundred-acre master plan inclusive of a number of elements that Greg Lorenz is going to go through in a few minutes. And, and let me just give you the, a sense of the boundaries to this. So the northern boundary would be along Claflin Avenue on the campus. East and western boundaries would be along Manhattan Avenue and College Avenue. And then this would carry north all the way to Marlette Avenue, so through the agronomy lands. And that incorporates a five-hundred-acre swath of land and, and multiple facilities that exist there today. One of the other things I'd add to this point, for us at the foundation, we're very bullish on this vision, this plan, but let me be clear, this centers around a couple of marquee assets and qualities that exist in this district that we feel are imperative for us to continue to make progress and go forward. Certainly NBATH is a marquee piece of that, but our College of Ag and Vet Medicine are the other pieces of that that really are, are the center, the epicenter of the ecosystem of why we're doing this. Without those quality assets, without the elite global capabilities that we have in NBATH, Ag, Vet Medicine, BRI, Weed Innovation Center and some of these other assets, we aren't making this decision to keep going forward. We think it gives us a competitive advantage in this community, something that over the last ten years, we've proven that this can work and the next fifteen are even more promising. So as I mentioned to you kind of verbally, the Edge District is our attempt to leverage and maximize what we've been given and an opportunity to leverage our university, to leverage NBATH and to use our strengths to build economic prosperity and, and be a net importer of investment and job creation. And so I'm not going to read these words to you, but it kind of memorializes what's the thesis of why we're doing this. So this really, this slide really gets at the heart of what I think is important to remember. So it's a five-hundred-acre master plan. We've gone beyond some sporadic plots here to really vision this out for, you know, for the decades ahead. Two billion in infrastructure has been invested in this district over the last ten years. Between NBATH, athletic facilities, foundation facilities and other improvements, over two billion, two billion in investment has happened. Over fourteen hundred jobs have been created in the district during that time. And what we've realized is we now hold in our hands and in this community the number two entertainment district in Kansas. So behind the legends where you've got the Speedway, KC Sporting and some of the other development, between some of the assets that exist and that will be occurring, are coming here in the next five years, we absolutely are the number two entertainment district in Kansas. So here's the great thing, so that's what's happened over the past decade, two billion in investment, fourteen hundred jobs and, and kind of a marquee brand that we're creating. The vision we see ahead is the addition or the attraction of additional three billion in investment, in infrastructure, in talent, creating an additional thirty-six hundred jobs. We absolutely believe this is Kansas's most comprehensive economic district. As you'll recall, I highlighted kind of the three dimensions of this, the health and wellness, the sports and entertainment and kind of the Ag innovation. Those three themes make this a very comprehensive and compelling district as compared to some other regions in the state in Wichita and Kansas City. And then the bottom right tells a very strong story. One of the things I shouldn't, I think shouldn't be lost on the commission is if you look at the land that we've bought, the foundation, this has been state land that was not paying property tax, that did not give the opportunity for generating sales tax. By buying this and turning this into an economic development district, we're creating the opportunity for property tax, for sales tax. And we think that that's a very important distinction, that we're a long-term partner here and we're creating opportunity for our city that we might not otherwise have if we didn't choose to do this. And so our projections with the assets that we have and, and other assets that we've got planned over the next many years, this could generate as much as seventy-seven million in property tax by two thousand and fifty. And that's not even including the sales tax revenue that could come from some of the other amenities that Greg is going to highlight in this park in just a bit. So next I'm going to turn it over to Greg and let him flip through some of the, the districts.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening, thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to sit here tonight and talk through kind of where the Edge is headed. As we remind and educate as we walk through this, I think there's a perception we are looking to take a lot of tenants from town and bring them to the Edge District. We have three very strong pillars that a tenant potential partner has to hit to be able to be accepted into the Edge District. Enhancing educational experience, the one that you'll hear about, well, you heard about it last week, the last two weeks, but that the, the city will hear about in January is Bernson McDonald, the world's largest power and transmission group, electrical engineering. They are, the Kansas State is the number one hiring school and they're opening up a significant innovation center right on that first floor, walking in by Rocky and Case, where they're going to hire the interns year round as interns, but their whole goal is to engrain them in their culture and ultimately keep them in summer internships and ultimately go work for Bernson McDonald for hopefully the rest of their career. I think innovation across industry, I can't say who, but in the last month with Rebecca, Rebecca's leadership and Dean Mittens, we've had three of the five world's largest big Ag equipment companies and they're really not Ag equipment anymore, they're Ag technology and digital technology. We've had them looking at co-locating in the Edge District in a building that we'll show you here in a second. And then supplying technical partners, obviously those are, were partners that supplies some service or goods to Kansas State University. These are the partners currently in the Edge District today, making up fourteen hundred So as we walk through this, just to highlight what Greg alluded to, clearly we have the cornerstone of the National Biagro Defense Lab and you can't forget that, but really President Linton brought a great lens to Kansas State, among other things. Their centennial campus is significant, well over five thousand jobs at NC State. But what we have unique, and a lot of you've been to Iowa State and Nebraska's Innovation Campus, those are not up next to Core Campus, they're a good distance away. So being adjacent to campus and really capture that energy with the natural, National Biagro Defense Lab, coupled with, we are the only innovation district in the nation with a power of five athletics, entertainment and a football complex, basketball, baseball, et cetera. So to capture that energy beyond really eight weekends a year is really core to bring. is really core to bringing this vibrancy to the, to the Ag, to the Edge. So just as a quick recap, ten years ago, I moved back, I'm a K-Stateer, moved back, and everyone said all the jobs that are coming to Manhattan. And finally, I think to Jason and Rebecca, I'm like, where are they going to go? Right, there was really a lot of empty land, the Research Park was empty. We, at that point, we had the kind of NanoScale was going through the transition, and Kent and Rebecca's, in the cities, Kansas State University Innovation Center were there. But very quickly, six, seven years ago now, we partnered with the Kansas Department Agriculture, so the big building right in the middle, adjacent next to National Biogro Defense Lab. We moved two hundred jobs, and that was an eleven-month construction. I don't think I could do it, I'm getting old. But we did that in eleven months, and we brought two hundred jobs from Topeka. Now, they don't pay property tax, but there was no incentives asked for either. And so we brought two hundred jobs, and then bottom left, during COVID, we moved their labs from Forbes Field, bringing in another twenty jobs. And then on the left on Manhattan Avenue, that's the new Stormont Vale facility. They are partnering with the Physicians Assistant Program, is in the Marion Carlisle Hall, which is the former NanoScale building, that's the new Physicians Assistant Program. To, to, to work with Stormont Vale, and we've got a great partnership with them, they invested a significant amount in the new simulation labs for the Physicians Assistant Program, and then they are required, and they were, they kept it through COVID, which a lot of hospitals didn't, eighteen clinical locations to have clinicals for the PA School. And so they kept that resolution. So the, long story short, the Research Park is basically built out with one, really one major site left. So as we move around, there is that land, that's, we call it the former purebred beef land, and we're really appreciative of the partnership with Jason, Rob Ott, and Brian Johnson. As that land just north of NBATH, we're waiting for the North Corridor Edge infrastructures to be able to get full turn radiuses in there to develop that. So that's probably, we haven't included that in any of our property tax and job projections as we're really waiting on that, all these projections really the next five years. So once again, was part of Brian Johnson's leadership, every week we meet with Athletics, the REC Center, College of Ag, Agronomy, Grain Science, Animal Science, to really ensure every single move up here is integrated and no one's doing something that's out of joint with the others. So that's really helped a tremendous amount as we look at this new Ag bio, this advanced BioAg innovation hub. So there's, there's multiple components going on here. With the North Corridor, there's a new road that's going from College Avenue all the way to Dennison, that is, is that road right in front of the Agronomy Innovation Center. So I've spent more time with my boss in the last week. They've been out raising eighty-two million dollars for us, part of the College of Agriculture's fundraising efforts, part of a state match. And so that Agronomy Research Center and Innovation Center will start construction next year. It's twenty-five million of that money that's philanthropic-based, that will really be the lynchpin. It's a world-leading agronomy group, climatology, drought, they're solving the world's problems. There's some new research leading there. And then the foundation on the south side of that will be buying that land from the state, sixteen acres for eight-point-eight-two million. The eight million, eight-point-eight-two million will go to the Agronomy Research Center and be used for construction, and it'll now be on the property tax rolls for the city, the county, and USD three-eighty-three. And so that transaction closes in January, and the university COO, CFO, Ethan Erickson's back here making sure I get the loan done on that, to make sure they get the money for it. So as we look.
Turn up.
Yeah, go ahead.
So is the Agronomy Innovation Center, that's not going to be part of K-State's tax-exempt status stuff? That's?
The Agronomy, those are academic buildings. Right across the road will be, and those are, none of those are included, those are academic buildings.
Okay.
Right across the road, we're creating homes for tenants, agriculture and agronomy tenants that will be on the property tax rolls.
Stuff right on Kimball.
Yeah, and I'll go to that next.
But the Research Center, Innovation Center, that's never going to.
Philanthropic donor base.
So remain on state land, it'll be academic and research.
Okay, I must have dozed off, I didn't hear that.
And so Agronomy Research Centers were core academic. Agronomy Innovation Center is really one-to-three-year grant projects with industry, governmental industry, and academic. Then that U-shaped building, we're converting that to labs for tenants to locate long-term, and then we can go to the next building where we're looking at Big Ag. Is that fair? Cool, thanks. So as we look at kind of where we're headed next, and where we've spent, I've been a lot of time with our Big Ag partners, is this is, if those that went to Wichita State, the aerospace, Big Bay Design Centers, where Airbus is sitting next to Spirit, sitting next to Boeing. This is exactly the same concept with the first building, is multi-tenant Big Ag, where they lease space, there's not academic, this pays property tax, where they design their next-generation products in partnership with K-State. But really, the X-factor here is the consumer. So you're looking at a thousand impressions a year right on Kimball. And so to have their co-location here with their branding and their dealer network and exposure is really an X-factor for bringing these Big Ag companies into Manhattan. And so that's, we're looking at starting that design in this winter. It feels like winter right now, but in about two months, so.
I just got a question, so.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out where things at.
Yeah.
So what's that, the road that's in front of that building is?
So this is, that building, that main road is Kimball, and that sidewalk where the pedestrians are, that goes, that's the sidewalk that goes right in front of the West Football Stadium there, if that helps you, John.
Yeah, because that'll just, because your next slide, you're going to go into.
Yeah.
Well, then your next one, you're going into the restaurant and all the rest of that. I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Figure out how does all that adjacency fit with this?
Yeah, and it's, so it's, so what we've learned, tremendous amount, is industry, you know, used to be the, the whole ecosystem, they were looking for tremendous amount of vibrancy with bars and six coffee shops. What we're seeing is it's a lot more wellness-focused, health-focused, and they want easy access in and out. And so that's why we feel this works with industry, Big Ag, co-located right next to the hotel, the steakhouse, et cetera, the residence, and so. But that is right across where the John Deere, the John Deere equipment is, it's right across from the Vaneer Family Football Complex.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and we're redesigning a bit, this doesn't quite, the next one doesn't quite look, because we really appreciate our partnership locally with Anderson Knight, who's helping us redesign. So what you're looking at right on the right, where that payment's at, that is the West Stadium sidewalk right across Kimball. And so the first building is a ninety-two-key Homewood Suites Extended Stay that will pay property tax. That is, but it'll look and feel like the Edge District. The focus there is to develop a teaching component for the hospitality students. To the left, and you'll notice, we've spent a lot of intentionality between the Edge District. We are paying for the land, and we're putting over two thousand parking stalls on our own dollar. And so we're not asking for free land, we're not asking for free parking, not free parking, but available parking. But intentionality, we believe, for successful restaurants are, so that's a restaurant. And actually, I'm meeting with the potential local operator first thing tomorrow morning to continue to flush this out with the kind of focuses, a premium steakhouse, Del Frisco's level right there on the, on the front right. And then the brewery is, is the group at MHK Brewery, so we're kind of calling this area The Bill. So brewery at The Bill. And one key question that we have is, they want to help start a brewing science program with K-State, and they're already having meetings that Rebecca's been in, but we don't want anything after ten o'clock. Right, this is a premium destination, we want safety, and we want premium. And so that's kind of the focus with MHK Brewery. And then the residential is a hundred-unit, primarily two-bedroom, two-bath, four-story, plus there's parking underneath, with secure parking underneath. And then right next to that pocket park, we are looking at a premium breakfast location there that we're working with an operator that's from Kansas as well. And so we're kind of trying to get enough amenities, so when you go to Nebraska Innovation Campus, Centennial Campus, NC State, they waited a bit too long to bring amenities that were, that made companies hesitant to move in. And so we feel with this, to John, to your point, having this right across from the stadium, to try to capture watch parties and viewing and engagement and programming that leverages the energy of K-State Athletics, we feel like this is a great fit and one we haven't necessarily seen nationally, so. And then as we work through it, it's not our project, but the student life under Thomas Lane, they are looking at full revitalization of the REC Center fields, which has a significant drainage issue there today. So once again, a lot of that would be helped by our joint watershed project up there, but that's about a nine-million-dollar, all astroturf revitalization of the REC fields there. And I'll take a quick break and turn it over to Greg to talk about the Animal Science Gateway, and then we'll get into the IRB request, if that's okay.
So this next zone in the district is one we're really excited about for a number of reasons. Obviously, you've heard Greg allude to this Ag-themed project we've been out raising funds for. One of the elements of that is between Callan-Weber Hall on the campus, a new facility and renovations of those facilities, but it would, in all likelihood, require taking down Weber Arena. That's still being decided. But this Animal Science Gateway brings a grand opportunity for us to upgrade the arena facilities for teaching, research, and education that we have for Kansas State, but do even more. We think that this is a grand opportunity to be proactive and leverage this as an economic asset for our community. And so what we've been working on is with our academic partners, a venue that would deal with all of their needs, but also would give us the opportunity to attract twenty-five to thirty venue kinds of competitions, showings a year that would be a grand economic draw for our restaurants, for our hotels, and also a magnet for youth and future prospective students. And so this next vision, the Animal Science Gateway, takes advantage of some current assets that we have up in this area, the Stanley Stout Center and our purebred beef unit. But we add a three-thousand-seat indoor climate-controlled competition and showing arena that will be best-in-class, premier regional asset across the state of Kansas. And we're already starting to get inquiries on this just based on the renderings and the showings and some of the early work we've done in fundraising for this. The eventuality is there would be a stall barn added to this that allows you to bring multiple-day kinds of showings and attractions here. But this is a real grand opportunity for Manhattan and for Kansas State to leverage an asset in a different way than we've been doing now. Weber Arena now probably is utilized twenty percent of the time. The other eighty percent of the time, it's sitting vacant and not being leveraged. We think building a regional class asset like this, making it an economic magnet and a teaching and research tool is good for the community and good for K-State. We've got over three-quarters of the money raised for this. The state has kind of delayed their matching fund application review process till January, so I didn't get my Christmas early. But we hope that they see that favorable, that additional money will help us get started on this project right away. So I'll click on this, and Greg's going to come up and walk you through. So this is kind of a fly-through video of what the Edge District could look like in the future. So to the right would be where Metal Lark is, to the left is the corner of Manhattan Avenue where some of those housing units are. Let's see, will this thing fly or not? There you go. To the left is where the purebred beef land is, you could have future labs. To the right is where the Animal Science Gateway and the competition arena would be. And if it doesn't pause and buffer? Riveting stuff, isn't it? So to the left is where NBATH would be, to the right, those buildings that we're coming up to is where the fire station is. We need to update those renderings because in the new vision, the fire station is staying. We might have to get the city a new computer.
All we'll add, there will be full sidewalks from the livestock competition arena all the way. So the walkability of the Edge District, when it's all done, will seem very short. Right now, it feels long because there's not a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah, we're probably just going to have to skip through this.
Here goes.
To the right is the office park, to the left is the REC fields. Further on down is the hotel, and then the athletics venue. But this gives you a feel for what this is going to look like over the next ten years as we build all this up? Okay, I'm going to pass it to you.
Maybe it'll buffer now. So this is the land just coming up here, on the right, we're getting ready to buy just past the crop improvement, but I will cut it short. Right there on the right. So it's a pretty substantial section, we're home for Big Ag, Integrated Research, but I'll move on. If I can. And then kind of live, live play. So as we look through this, kind of the key talking points from my, from our perspective are, you know, yes, we are asking for one building's property tax and office and labs. We do not anticipate asking for incentives for restaurants and hotels. And what we are focused on is the spec office and labs. And so to get them built now versus you kind of look at the build-to-suit generally have been property tax exempt, or if we waited for a tenant to build a whole building for them, I'm sure they would be in front of you all with property tax abatement request anyway, an incentive. So what we're asking is to move ahead. So the plans we reviewed generate from thirty-eight thousand right before the Rockin' Case building was built. So generally, we weren't on the tax rolls at that point with these spec office buildings and labs, future labs. And so we see a tremendous scale up even with ten-year tax abatements for office and labs. And so we're asking to be able to add approaching five million in property tax a year by 2050, and just being able to breathe as we fill these spec office and labs as we move forward, understanding the request today is only for the nineteen-sixty Kimball property. But what we're trying to overview is, we don't see another growth opportunity for the city in revenue that isn't organic increase of property value or a mill levy increase that adds this tremendous amount of property tax. And once again, we're just asking for the ability to breathe as we build these buildings and fill them out. So we just wanted to kind of tackle head-on, sometimes the, you know, the foundation isn't investing here, our foundation isn't investing here. And so we just wanted to highlight, we haven't asked for tremendous amount of incentives. Eighteen-eighty Kimball, which was a thirty-thousand, three-hundred-thousand-dollar forgivable loan based on hitting a hundred jobs in seven years, and five-hundred-thousand conventional loan that we pay back. We've already paid one-point-one million, or last week we wrote the check, for two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. That went directly to the city, county, and USD three-eighty-three. In addition, to Jason's point, our plan is, our plan, we have not committed yet, to pay up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for that shared water detention. I call it Stormont Water Detention, that's a Freudian slip. But it's a water detention that K-State Athletics, ourselves, and the city would be putting on K-State land on the backside of all this. And then the foundation's paying out-of-pocket, close to seven-hundred-thousand for the Edge District branding. You'll see all the flags and the pylons and all that we're paying for out of our pocket, in addition, the master planning and the branding. So all in all, to date, in the Edge District, we're two-point-four million in, in kind of investments in the Edge and the North Corridor. In addition, we're very proud that we buy the land from the state that's not paying property tax. And since 2012, we've purchased fourteen-point-two million dollars of land that is putting on the property tax rolls. So total investment in the last ten years of almost seventeen million dollars, that's non-facilities related. This doesn't count the two thousand parking stalls we're doing, this doesn't count a lot of the other investment. And the reason I highlight that is, you know, the Chamber goes on these trips, and they're phenomenal trips. So the Nebraska Innovation Campus, sometimes people don't understand their funding models. So the Nebraska Innovation Campus, which is a distance from campus and the Haymarket, they have a TIF tool, development tool, that's allowed them to help develop the inner parks and all the way to the pads and the parking. Wichita State, they were, the Chamber was just there, they have a one-point-five-mill levy that is, that goes to. is, that goes to the Kansas State, Wichita State Innovation Campus. That's a phenomenal redevelopment for Wichita. We're big fans of it. Purdue Discovery Park, a TIF of $150 million. And then Iowa State Research Park, and I believe one of the commissioners asked, I'm not quite sure how this one works because I'm not sure who it was, but they have a TIF, and also they allow property tax abatement on certain new office and labs. So we are not saying poor foundation or poor K-State, but we're not offered any development tools like this that our peer sets that we're competing against these big ag companies have. And so we're asking, building by building at this point, can we just have a time to breathe like the others have to get these projects done? So as we look at the office park, so the 1880 Kimball, I just call the Rockin' K's building, we couldn't be a bigger fan of Scott Seaborn and what he's done there. That building is virtually full. And we always look at, is it full of new, new jobs? We're very transparent. That building has 25% of jobs that moved from Manhattan into the Edge District. They fit the partner filters, but they moved from Manhattan. 75% of the jobs are net imports from outside the county and the city to come in there. So yes, there could be a little bit of leakage in, but they fit the filters, but we're net import of jobs as we look through this. So as we look at the next building that we're in front of you today, compared to the Rockin' K's building, there's three fundamental differences. One, we went one-story taller, so it's 80,000 square feet, which we felt was warranted on this. It's really premium location overlooking the stadium. Two, there's no restaurant because we're planning on the next restaurants over College and Kimball. And then three, for all those that have meetings and events at the Edge District, we can't add enough. Our partner tenants have such a thirst for meeting and event space, we felt like we needed to add more because they're collaborating so much, not only with K-State, but other industry partners in the city, right? So those are the three fundamental differences besides costs. So just a quick line item from 1880's, the Rockin' K's building, 1960 Kimball is the building we're talking about. So we're very proud that we are very efficient in creating homes for new companies at 95% efficiency, but the same building's $101 a square foot more than it was four years ago, when you even take into account the increased square footage, and the interest rate has more than doubled. And so we're asking for, it makes the pro forma difficult, and once again, this isn't poor foundation. We're asking, please let us breathe to get these built and allow us to build that property tax base to 77 million by 2050. And then we're putting in twice the equity into this building that we were planning on than we did with the first building. And then lastly, I want to highlight, we're adding 275 parking stalls that we're not only paying to put the parking stalls in, we're buying the land to put the parking stalls, and then we're paying property tax on that after the tax abatement. So we're trying to do our part. So just quick summary, 1960 Kimball. And once again, you know, if you look at our cost-benefit analysis, I've kind of gone through the construction dynamics of it, and we're really proud of where it's at. In fact, we met yesterday with McCann Gordon and our construction team, and the construction numbers are holding, which I don't think many people could say that right now. We're adding 200, the building can hold 250 jobs. The cost-benefit analysis had 130 new jobs to the county and 75 new to the city, and that was all driving their return estimates as well. We just said 250 is in the building. We didn't say those are all net imports into Manhattan. No cost to the city. We're putting all parking in, 270 stalls, 75 stalls. And so our boards authorize us to move forward to start construction in March, and we will, I promise you, we are not some speculative developer, we're not unknown entity. We will finish this project and be on time, July 2024, to create homes for these new jobs on that. We believe an X-factor for the foundation is, so once again, we're not a developer that has outside money and other people running our buildings, right? These are four phenomenal individuals on the K-State Foundation team that drove 98% tenant satisfaction in our multiple buildings of tenants that are existing today. And so it doesn't do us, any of us, any good to bring in new companies and have them have a bad facility experience. And so these are four phenomenal local foundation employees that take care of our tenants day in, day out, beyond the people like Rebecca and others who help bring them in for K-State. So as we look at our risk profile, 1960 Kimball with tenure tax abatement, the break even is 83%. When we look at the 1880 Kimball and/or Rockin' K's building, the break even was 77%. And so just a broken record, alls we're asking is ability to breathe as we bring companies in and net import jobs into Manhattan as we work through this. So why requesting this? Even with tax abatement of 10 years, by 2050, this building will pay beyond that tax abatement, over $7 million. 250 projected jobs, 130 new to the county, 75 new to the city. And all, and once again, we have no available development tools that our peer sets have that we're trying to attract. We're not allowed them, and it's not poor foundation, it's just fact, and that's why we're in front of you and appreciate your time. So allow us to scale up to 77 million in property packs by 2050 with building, spec buildings now versus waiting. And our risk, even with 25% occupancy, is 1.2 million cash loss. So our quest in front of you is allow us to add 5,000 jobs and build the property tax base to 77 million by 2050. Thanks for your time, and we're happy to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you both. Does any commissioner have a follow-up question of the proposed, of the foundation? Is there more discussion to have? I mean, I want to hear from the public before you start stating your position. Okay. If we have questions of the developer now, or the foundation now is the time. Okay, thank you. Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Members of, nobody signed up ahead is what I understood from the city clerk. Please state your name and, just a minute, I have to read this, residential address and/or your organization.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
For the record, and those listening or watching, each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the commissioners nor the city staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will, please, we'll take your comments under advisement. Please proceed. Hello?
I apologize. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Mike Matson. I'm Director of External Affairs for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I live at 3031 Sunnyside Drive here in Manhattan. This is my maiden voyage before you all in this role, so I will attempt not to sink the ship, but I appreciate the time to share with you some thoughts of our organization. The Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce has a mission to grow our community's economy. To achieve this, we believe we must add people and jobs to our community. That is the reason that our organization has been at the forefront of supporting the investments that are being made in the Edge Collaboration District. We have always seen this area as the top opportunity to attract and retain knowledge-based companies. First, we'd like to thank you, the City Commission, and your professional staff for the work, energy, and dedication that you have put into this effort. The decision to focus public resources today while betting on a return in the future is clearly a very difficult one. So please know that we at the Chamber are grateful for your commitment to this effort. We are here today to consider the opportunity to partner again with the Kansas State University Foundation on a third office building near the intersection of Dennison and Kimball. According to the application, new facility will be 80,000 square feet, part of an overall investment strategy of $3 billion. It's estimated that at completion, the Edge District will be home to 5,000 new jobs, most with direct connections to Kansas State, paying significantly higher wages than the current Manhattan average. As you've heard, the University Foundation is requesting a 10-year tax abatement to help support its roughly $27 million investment in the new 80,000-square-foot office facility. The Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce supports this request for the following reasons. First, the facility meets all five of the criteria for granting tax abatements that are identified in the city's tax abatement policy. These include net benefit to taxing jurisdictions, as shown in their cost-benefit analysis, quality job creation. Again, the foundation's proposal, as you saw, estimates 130 new jobs to the county, 75 new jobs for Manhattan. Capital investment, economic diversification, and meeting an identified need, in this case, location for companies that want to be near K-State and/or the biosecurity assets that will be housed in the Edge District. Secondly, the foundation has indicated that they would not be able to construct this new facility in a speculative manner without the abatement. With no available space in this area, Manhattan may miss out on opportunities for company attraction or expansion. Third, this project is part of a significantly larger development being planned by the foundation and other private partners that will create a vibrant district that will not only help attract companies, but also help attract new residents and can be leveraged by the university to attract students. As we've seen, this model has proven successful for institutions like Wichita State in increasing enrollment, as students can visualize their careers and potential employers while choosing a school. We realize this application is not without its challenges, as your deputy city manager has pointed out. They've been outlined. Our support at the Chamber is with the understanding that these will be dealt with through a continued dialogue between the city and the foundation. Our membership at the Chamber will expect specifics to be addressed, including the competition clause in the abatement policy and any exceptions that may be made to the policy and the impacts this may have on future projects. Finally, the Chamber's support is contingent upon securing the 205 net new jobs that were outlined in the foundation's proposal. As part of the dialogue between the city and the foundation, the Chamber would suggest crafting a development agreement as a vehicle that would get you there. In the end, the future economic vitality of our community relies on our ability to continue to add high-wage job opportunities. This project is a significant step toward the development of what can become one of the premier economic development investments in the entire state. We encourage the City Commission to look favorably upon this request, and we stand ready to assist wherever possible.
Under the wire. Thank you very much, Mike. All right. Does anyone else wish to come forth and speak, please? So there are a number of people here. Does anyone else wish to come forward? Okay. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. Would the applicant like to make any final comments? This would also be the last chance for commissioners to ask questions of the applicant.
At the risk of stepping on my tongue and missing the opportunity to take advantage of the momentum and the great words that have been said, I want to thank Jason for his comments. I think the partnership has been very, very strong throughout this process to visit with Ron and Jason, Jason Smith and others, and kind of dialogue about this has been really, really helpful. And so our hope is that you have all the information, the insight about this opportunity that helps you make a great decision, and we just appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff and discuss these items further.
Yeah, I have. I don't know if it's to the staff or to Greg Williams and Greg Lorenz, but I appreciate meeting with you individually and also going through the entire presentation. Sometimes things are so complex, it helps to hear things two or three times to make sure you have all the puzzle pieces together in your hearing. Sometimes you hear different things or read different things that you didn't know before. We do believe, I believe in the foundation and its work and in the Edge District, before it was changed to the Edge District, the North Campus Corridor, the city invested close to $43 million in partnership with Kansas State University. So definitely, we feel the impact from when Kirk Schultz was here till now, and we're still continuing that and leveraging it, as well as with NBA, we invested significantly in that. I think the package before us, you're already exempt from sales tax because of the property itself. The property tax abatement is new to us, and I'm leery of giving 10 years of property tax abatement for the $3.6 million. I understand we probably are not eligible for a TIF district in that area. I did ask Jason at length about that, and maybe that's something we can talk to our legislators about. The Economic Development Funds was also something I discussed with him, and we are somewhat restrained already because some of it's already, a majority is already dedicated to Nighthawk slash Scorpion as they come in and we work on some of those contract issues. The projects before us in the next few years probably will be something with MATC and all the other projects you brought up, in addition to other businesses that might be coming, which also want to leverage either IRBs, property tax abatements, or any of the other tools we have for growth in our community. I'm hoping that we can have a discussion so that I'm okay with doing maybe five years of a property tax abatement in the sense that it's a close to $360,000 on our taxpayers. And that's the way I see it, as close to half a mil where it falls on the rest of our residents. And unfortunately, our small businesses don't have the same privilege of asking for a property tax abatement for growth, and they don't have the same deep pockets or donors, such as the foundation or Kansas State University. So I want to continue that dialogue and also have some benchmarks in place. When we did the office, K-State Office Foundation Building, there was $800,000 from Economic Development Funds and certain benchmarks that need to be met for it to be forgivable each time. So I would like to see a little bit more of that in order for those benchmarks to be met within our region and especially for the city of Manhattan. I understand this impacts the county as well as USD 383. So that's where I'm at. I'm open to discussion with the rest of the commissioners and see their thoughts on this. We certainly believe in Kansas State University and the growth that's happening, and what you showed us tonight is very exciting and it shows, brings for a lot of optimism for the city of Manhattan and hopefully does increase enrollment because ultimately, we want to see that grow as well. So that, those are a few of my thoughts as we dialogue here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and also thank you for all the meetings you did with all of us ahead of time because that really gave us a chance to go over a lot of things. And I think people watching shouldn't think that we didn't have a lot of questions because we aren't looking into it, it's just we already got to ask a lot of questions in those meetings. The other thing is I do want to talk about some of the input that I've gotten. I'm in support of this project, but I do want to recognize a lot of the input that wasn't in support of the project, and a lot of people actually did a good job and did their homework, and they read through, and I got copies of the documents that were submitted with questions and everything else on it. Unfortunately, this didn't come till the end, but I got it distributed a lot afterwards. And it was, you know, things such as we're given a blank check, we're not following our policies, others don't get something like this, we're going to have people moving from other parts of town, filling in there. And they did notice that issue with the $30 million, but $12 million is what the taxes were coming on. One of the first things I threw back was, well, we're not getting any tax revenue today off of this. And they said, they'll do it anyway, you don't need to do this project. But my response was, you know, we do have a strong relationship and a strong community partner. And again, even if they didn't buy off, we aren't getting any tax money from it right now. The other thing is looking at the whole magnitude of the investment that's being made there and that we will get property tax on that. And then the chart- And then the chart that was up there when we looked at our competition out there and the number of financing things, this is a way for us to help our community partners here be able to get everything taken care of. As far as the details of the agreement, I think we have time to work on those and get those worked out now and once the building is, you know, completed. But in general, I'm supportive of the proposal.
I've got one question of the staff. You know, we've talked about sales tax, but if it's university property, it goes to City University Fund. So is this new building, is the sales tax going to the City University Fund, or do we need to research that? How's that work?
It'll be general city revenue. It won't be on state property any longer, so it won't be part of the City University.
So any of the land that's no longer officially state property, that goes in the general fund? That's an important distinction.
Correct.
I just wanted to point that out. The other thing is, as John said, you know, in my mind, you've got state land where we're getting nothing in property tax, and by supporting this, we will get something in property tax eventually. So to me, that's a pretty safe bet. You know, you've got to really, you've got to really go with that. In deference to what, you know, Commissioner Reddy said, you know, a little bit of clawbacks, I boiled it down to looking at the numbers. Okay, we go with a ten-year tax abatement, but why don't we tie it to the occupancy rate? Because they've got a break-even point. They said they got to breathe. So once it goes over eighty-three percent, then maybe we terminate the tax abatement. And if that happens in five years, great, it may take eight. But to me, that would be the metric that I think would work for both parties and satisfy people that are concerned about it. So that's what my recommendation is on that when we come to the final thing. I have no problems with the IRBs, and I'm going to vote in favor of this.
I just want to say, love it, love it, love the whole friggin' thing. Get the whole thing built out as quick as possible, because I think it's going to be a very cool deal. Now, I am pleased that you are so comfortable with our relationship that you guys don't feel like you have to sort of follow the rules as far as tying it to job creation or something of more significance. So we do obviously have a great relationship if you guys don't feel like you sort of have to kiss our buttsack that. So with that being said, there's a couple of different things. First of all, based on the fact that there's going to be, you're moving twenty-five percent of the, your first occupants that are apparently fully committed are going to be relocated, there's no reason we should be at a hundred percent from day, seventy-five percent is the kind of the top as far as I would go, based on the fact that it's, yeah, there's not, those are not new jobs to Manhattan, they're retaining jobs, and I know over the years we've seen the chambers made reports, hey, we've created and retained three thousand jobs. It's like retained jobs is acceptable now, and so it's not part of our economic development strategy to retain jobs, but that's not, shouldn't be our focus. But so I'm a little, I would like to see either, I would like just to consider the spec building program we have where you just do five years of, without property taxes, while you're getting a spec building up and going. So I would be, my aim would be to go five years, and at seventy-five percent as a maximum, that works out to like one point four million, and when you hit the one point four million of tax abatement, it's done, and hopefully by then the place is full, and I'm just not sure who else is entitled to breathing room who's in business in Manhattan. No one gave me any friggin' breathing room when things were, I was trying to get started. And so that's, I appreciate you guys wanting to do something on the land and getting stuff on the tax rolls, but we got to have some return on investment a little faster than twenty fifty, or even if, again, three billion dollars invested by twenty thirty-five, three billion bucks ought to generate a whole lot more property tax unless just a lot of it is being abated there, so. So, yeah, I'm supportive of the project, I'm willing to give you something. I don't know why TJ didn't apply for some stuff other than, I suppose it's a hassle and you have to come up here and present to the commission about it and
He got land.
And he got some land instead, which, yeah, three point six million, you'd probably rather pay for the land than get three six million, so. So that's, I'm supportive of the idea, but I would be most interested in capping it at seventy-five percent based on there's never going to, yeah, there's only going to be a certain amount of new jobs, and I'd be willing to do the five years that other spec buildings for manufacturing, warehousing, and stuff like that. We've got that on the books, and you could make the case that in the IRB guidelines, it says try not to create a favoritism over other things. Obviously, you'll be competing for some of the same jobs that Midtown would be competing for, and if they get tax abatement, he gets, the foundation gets tax abatement, he doesn't, there's an imbalance there, and I know they're in a TIF, and that money's got to go to the TIF. Well, I think of the Edge District as kind of an unofficial TIF, that somehow we've invested piles of money in this, it'd be nice to get some return at some point and pay for those bonds that we're going to be hanging out there with, and so I'll help, but not completely and totally.
I, this is just a huge conceptual plan, and we're looking at just a smaller piece right now. I would like to see a development agreement. I think that that's how we behave when we have a development proposal that, and a developer that we're working with, and I'd like to work with them to further define some of this, rather than just having this big conceptual plan with maybe this and maybe that. I'd like, we're the stewards of the city's money, and we have to be responsible. And so while I do support it and I want to support it, I also want to put some, put some structure to this, and I could support the five-year, I just, you know, it's like the state law, the max is ten years, the max is that. I'm not always willing to go with the max every time. I think that we need to just moderate some of our, just instead of giving everything away every time, whether it's a parking lot or just generally. So I could support something partway, but maybe not, and I don't know, but anyway, I would like, I like to see structure. When a developer comes to us, we expect certain things, and we're talking even this intention for two years from now, I think we can give it more shape than just wide open. I'm sure you have more to add, Jason.
Well, I just want to summarize what I think I heard. I'm not sure I heard any consistencies amongst the five of you in terms of what you want to do, but John, you appeared to be ready to move forward with a hundred percent for ten years, when you appeared to be ready to move forward until they reached eighty-three occupancy on their building, and then the IRB abatement would go away, basically a hundred percent up to that point. Is that accurate? Okay. You should, you appeared to be somewhere around the five-year mark, a hundred percent for five?
I think seventy-five.
Where Mark's at?
Seventy-five, yeah. I would be okay with that. I would be flexible with that.
Okay.
Five years maximum, though.
Seventy-five percent. And Mayor, five years, seventy-five percent in the ballpark where you're open to as well?
Sure. I mean, I just, I want some other alternative rather than everything.
The resolution that's written today, it is a property tax exemption. So what you have before you, based on what you've all discussed, I believe you really only have one individual ready to go there. So for action this evening, I'd look to Sarah, but I don't think we'd necessarily need to take action in the event we're changing course here and coming up with different percentages. And I just bring up that point so we don't have a motion made in a debate. If the majority don't want to do what's on the agenda, that's fine. I don't even know if it necessarily needs to be tabled, but I'll look back to legal staff to see if no action could be taken. If you want to take action, you want to take a vote, that's fine, too. I think ultimately, we'll be sitting back down with the foundation in the event a motion can't be crafted. The reason I bring it up, because just going fifty-five years at seventy-five percent, my next question to you all is, does that depend on the jobs created?
To me, it does. I think, you know, when we talk about when the other building was built, not just transferring jobs from one side of Manhattan to the other side, that's not creation of jobs. I think creation of jobs is coming to Manhattan, whether they're coming from other communities or whatever it might be, but not here already, so they're coming here. I don't know what it means as far as remote jobs, I haven't thought about that, but I do want well-paid jobs, so not so much as hourly at eleven or twelve dollars, I'm looking at good compensation jobs, like you would do a economic development forum. I want to see what those jobs look like and how much. That's the proposal I have in my mind, because that gives me, like Mayor Morris said, some kind of structure and some kind of benchmarks that will be met.
I got a question. I mean, the way this, you know, resolution's written, it says a property tax abatement, it doesn't have ten years there.
It's assumed, it's assumed with the way it's written.
It's assumed?
Yes.
But it's not in there? So to me, that meant that, you know, we could pass this, and then we can hash out whatever the clawback's going to be later.
The only, I mean, nothing prevents the governing body from asking administration and the foundation to go put together an agreement or something that you can bring back. But formally, this action sets forth an IRB with a ten-year, hundred percent tax abatement. If it was something else, it would specify it in the resolution itself.
And Jason?
Go ahead.
If I may.
Yep.
On, in section four, under the property tax exemption, it does read that it's a, an exemption for ten years. So, yes, I, I mean, I would defer to your city attorney, but I would think that there's no reason that we really need to take a vote just to vote down this resolution at this meeting, but with this input, go back to further discussions with the foundation on what exact level we could bring back to this commission at a subsequent meeting. Would that be appropriate?
And that's where I was headed, Sarah. I agree with you. The point I'm trying to also distinguish between the majority of the commissioners, do they desire a development agreement that actually holds the foundation accountable in out-years to jobs, investment, and those other factors? That's typically how we structure IRBs with abatements, and I made that point earlier. It just clarifies for you all, the community, and the applicant, what the expectations are, the percentages, the number of years, and then gets into that job creation category. If that's not desired, we can turn around and come back with a resolution that clearly states five years, seventy-five percent. If none of that other stuff was going to be considered, and I'd have to look back to Sarah, we noticed the meeting, we noticed the action. If the commission decides to change the action but not require the development agreement with jobs, can that be done in this meeting, Sarah, or do we have to notice another public hearing?
There is no need to hold a second public hearing on this. That's been accomplished, satisfies the statute, so there is no need to do that, even if we want to just defer consideration on a resolution to a later meeting.
Okay. So they're your options.
Yeah, I'd like, I think, we would like to support this thing five to nothing. We just got to come up with something that we can live with a little bit better, and so I think we've got the feel, you kind of have an idea of what we're thinking.
Sure.
Go back and chat some more.
Okay.
And see what we can come up with so we can all get behind it and feel good about it, because I think right now, the public doesn't feel good about it, the ones we hear from, we don't feel good about it. It's a great thing, and we want it to happen, it's just a matter of, we got to come up with something that we can sleep at night looking at.
No, I agree. I think it's about being fair to some of our, because if we set the standard with this, there's going to be more organizations coming forward, and we don't have, this is going to be the framework, and there is no framework. So I want to make sure we have something set up. The way you would have done it if it was, when you said we need to go revisit this and this, what should that look like? Because that should be a template for other organizations that want, if there is a property tax abatement that they would like to request. And we believe in all of our organizations in the city of Manhattan, not just the foundation, and there are several that are going to be coming in. That's why NBAF has been so good to Manhattan, because so many organizations are now coming to Manhattan, but we want to make sure that there is something that they can also fill out if there's some requests or some type of encouraging their business to be successful in Manhattan as well.
And I appreciate those comments, and a lot of our past economic development discussions by way of tools, we've identified downtown and we've identified in Aggieville why we're investing in those areas. And I do think we have a unique partner who is taking state property that's generating nothing today and converting it into developable property, which will be on the tax rolls. And from an economic development tax strategy, I would think the community would be embracing this opportunity, and it could actually be called out in future policies, and you could debate on just how great of an incentive you want to create to do that, because it is unique. And a lot of the complaints we've heard over the years, how many, how much property is off the tax rolls, just about every governing body member has went down that path before. We do, again, I want to credit them tremendously for what they're doing, because that is not easy, and they are literally about the only ones that can do it.
Not literally.
I know.
On this land, the other.
I know. So we have to take that into consideration. I think it's part of that global view and a future policy, but I bring it up because it's just, it's not apples and apples to other property in Manhattan. It just isn't, and we recognize that, and that's why we're here before you this evening. I appreciate the feedback. Commissioner, I agree, we can sit down and come up with another strategy and bring it forward.
Jason, I want to mention, too, the need for, our policy has some specific criteria for, like, focusing on job creation. We have talked and we have held other applicants accountable.
Sure.
For not just moving jobs across town and for creating, they have a certain level right now in creating more jobs. We have to, we have to be fair, and so I'm struggling with that as we talk about this, you know, no controls kind of thing that we've been talking about.
The feedback is helpful.
Yeah.
And it will help us get to a resolution.
I'm less concerned about the job creation, because problem is, you know, you're trying to tie it to that one building, and if you look at the master plan, there's all kinds of other stuff going in there. So I don't see a problem with the jobs. You know, I think you can resolve the whole issue with the tax abatement by, as I said, tying it to the break-even point, which is what motivates them to buy the land and build a building. And to me, that's the simplistic way to, you know, to look at it without complicating it, but, you know, I could go with voting for this as it is, like, you know, like John said, but based on, you know, what I see as a return on investment. I don't want to see us gum this thing up and slow it down, you know? But if we can, if we can go renegotiate and at least get something between five and ten years that will work for the foundation, that'll, you know, make the majority of the commission happy, then fine, you know, I can go with that, too, but let's not, let's not put the brakes on this thing.
I see this as a precedent, and I just want to do it right, because I believe there will be more buildings coming with asks, and we can't do everything, and I want Riley County to be involved in this somewhere, and typically, I don't see them anywhere at the economic development table. It's just those things that, it needs to be just a whole package, so, thank you.
But, you know, Linda, if you look at, you know, like, I don't know, I guess I got into this pretty deep, you know, as part of this Edge thing, they're going to build this nice livestock facility up there, which could really benefit the county because they want to build a new fairgrounds. Well, maybe they don't need to build a new fairgrounds. They could, you know, partner with K-State.
But there has to be.
And there's all kinds of other spin-off benefits that have not been outlined on there.
There has to be an agreement for that kind of thing to work, and we're just at the very beginning, and we can't predict anything at this point. We're not, we don't have the full picture on down the way.
Yeah, obviously, I'm at the other end of the spectrum. I understand everyone's concerns, though. I mean, I went through my litany and list of all the stuff that we had heard. I just think this is a unique opportunity with a very strong partner. I just think this is a unique, um, opportunity with a very strong partner that I'd be willing to tell someone else, no, you're not gonna get the same deal, uh, that we gave them because of our history and their financial strength and the type of huge investment that they're gonna do. But obviously, I'll support that. I'll support something else. We, well, I don't think there's a-
Bring us something back in January.
Commissioner, we do need a motion. You can make a motion to table it to either a specific date or just to give guidance for a motion that tables it for city administration to negotiate with the KSU Foundation. It doesn't have to have a specific date.
I move that we table this, uh, agenda item until the city staff can, uh, negotiate with the foundation.
Commissioner, can I make a comment before you conclude?
Um, we need a second and then we can have discussions.
I'll second.
You'd like to come forward. Ken, am I?
It's not your policy.
It's not my policy.
So I appreciate the great conversation. And, and just to clear up a couple of things, and again, a great dialogue and discussion and deliberation around this. I think we tried to be excruciatingly clear and precise as we did this with staff originally and talking about the amount of incentives that we needed for this to economically work was much higher than what we're asking for originally. We were looking for something in the magnitude of five million dollars to make this work. We have, are guided to a place where we presented something and we think the full amount is required to make this work to a citizen or others who might feel like, well, the foundation can just pay for it and just do it. Let me be clear. There is a point at which we would choose not to do this. Our preference is to go now. Greg is fond of saying, "We're not for profit, but we're also not for loss." So we are not going to do a building or finance something that is at a loss. That's just not what we're gonna do. What this would do would be delay time. At the end of the day, this is an opportunity cost of time for our citizens of either zero, uh, revenue coming through this property tax or accelerating the time of which the citizens could benefit from that. And so we've not seen this as money out of the pockets of the citizens, but accelerating the time to get money into this community doing services that we want. So I just wanna be clear, um, some of the, the measures, uh, the accountability elements, I think we're fine with, but we have a dollar target that we have to hit for this to work. So I, I want us to be wise about what we're trying to get done. There's a lot of benefit that could come to the city, and these assets and these amenities are tied together. The arena, the hotel, the restaurants, the office facility are part of an ecosystem that are required. Not being able to do this office building, uh, impairs some of the other elements that we're putting in up there. So I do think we need to look at this comprehensively and ask ourselves about the total value that's coming. And many of these assets have a mix of other dollars in them. So when we look at the arena project, there's philanthropic dollars there. So I'm not dealing with a borrowing issue there as we are on the office park. So I would just want you to be aware that there's complexity in here. There's a comprehensive outcome nature that's incredibly good for the city of Manhattan and for the citizens, and I don't want us to lose sight of that. We're happy to come to the table, but if we can't hit that mark or if it puts us, uh, into a place where the risk is just too high, we'll have to delay. And we don't want that for the city. We don't want that for our community. Thank you.
I think we're on a tr- trajectory to bring it back to the city commission in January. And, um, I think that's about as fast as we're gonna be able to move. Uh, I would expect that with further refinement, the city commission would approve it. It's just a matter of working on a few details. And, uh, so I don't think we're holding you up big time. I think the holidays are a loss anyway. So it'll be back in January. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, Brenda, would you call the roll? The motion is to table. Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone who came for this item. We appreciate it. Appreciate your proposal. It's a big proposal. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to consider, uh, in the, this is the general agenda, to consider annexing Landing Business Park. And, uh, Stephanie Peterson, the Director of Community Development, is here to make a presentation to us.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, just to clarify, this is a resolution of intent. This isn't the annexation ordinance before you this evening. Uh, the city did receive a, uh, MCM, excuse me, MCM, uh, submitted a petition for annexation for what is being referred to right now as the Landing Business Park. Um, this could very well change during the plating process. Um, but this is kind of how we've been referring to it to date. The general location of this property is the southwest part of the city or to the southwest of the city, right west of the airport. We can take a closer look at the seventy-eight acres that is, uh, being requested to be annexed. Um, you may note that there are some areas here, heavily wooded areas, along with, um, some more open area grassy plains. Um, this will kinda come into future, uh, future conversation we'll have, um, here in a few slides. This is probably the picture that shows the topography best. Um, we can always go back and reference this should we need to. Uh, this was included in your packet. It's a little bit hard to see up here. But what I wanted to note is that in order for this property to develop, a significant amount of site preparation has to occur. Um, there are a lot of, um, well, let me show you this. So the existing ground elevation of the property as it, as it exists today is this dotted line that you see here, kind of this hill and valley system. Um, what I am told is FAA's, um, kind of preferred and the safest departure service for the airport is this red line that's right here. Uh, at some point, that existing ground, uh, kind of interferes with that preferred, uh, departure surface. The last line that you see, the solid line, that is what MCM would be proposing as the finished ground elevation. This would allow, not only get it out of the departure service for the airport, but it would also make, um, a portion of this property developable for a future business park. Um, in some areas, there's going to be up to forty feet that has to be removed, mostly in the area that is currently in that surface departure, or the departure service, surface area. Given the amount of earthwork that has to go forth in the site preparation for, um, not only for the, the airport and their, uh, departure surface, but also to make this site something that it can be developed on in the future, um, the, the grading, the erosion control, sediment, all of that's typically handled at the plating process. Um, the amount of earthwork required is going to take several years, maybe up to four or five. So that plating process will be delayed until it gets closer to the time that this site is actually able to be prepared for that development. However, to mitigate some of the concerns that have been expressed by Random Woods, which is this unincorporated subdivision up to the northwest, um, along with, uh, some of the concerns by, by Public Works, since we're not plating, MCM agreed to certain requirements as conditions of annexation. Um, those right now are included in a petition of annexation, which was included in your packet. Um, that's really a preliminary draft of an annexation agreement that would come before you in a couple of months, should you find it advisable to annex this. Um, and it would be, go forth with the annexation ordinance. Uh, what you see here, the site plan that's been provided by MCM, this is still a draft. A finalized version of this would be included in that annexation agreement. But I really think that this helps to kind of depict some of those requirements that would be conditions of annexation. Um, so to run through those, um, somewhat quickly, again, if we have questions, we can, we can come back and look at this. Um, the first of which is this red buffer area that you see here. The Manhattan Development Code, or MDC, it requires a twenty-five-foot buffer yard between any kind of, um, competing uses, so commercial to residential, um, for example. Um, however, MCM has agreed to, uh, double this. This is a fifty, uh, foot buffer yard that would be completely surrounding, um, the, the boundary between the residential area, um, even the church down here in the far corner and the MCM property. Um, there is an area that's kind of identified, yeah, in this darker red area. Um, currently, there are no trees. Uh, that's the only area really that doesn't have trees that bounder, uh, that borders this residential subdivision. Um, they have agreed to plant some overstory trees there, um, making sure also that species doesn't interfere with the airport, um, operations. Another item to note is that there's a pretty substantial elevation change where the subdivision sits in some areas about, um, thirty to thirty-five feet higher than what the fin- the finished elevation would be of this site. Some other items, um, the area that's in blue, uh, it's been communicated to staff that these are areas that MCM really doesn't plan to take a lot of trees out of. They would like to keep them as is. Um, however, there might be, when it, uh, when it comes time to plating and utilities have to be, um, provided to the site, there may be some minor disruption, having to remove trees, put in, um, utility lines. Or, um, in some areas, you can see the sedimentation basins. Um, if another one would have to be created or this one expanded, it might kind of, um, go into that area. Um, and then, again, because, uh, plating is not taking place, uh, the, there's a final, uh, grading plan that has been provided or, or will be provided. Um, and that's in the event that, let's say, this property is sold off to another developer. Um, they don't complete what, um, is shown on the site plan. That gives the city the opportunity to go in and actually complete that work and then assess the, the property owner rather than the city picking up that tab. Um, so that's the intent of the petition, um, of the site plan and what will be the annexation agreement. That's, I think, a little unusual from how we typically do things. Um, but MCM was agreeable to this, um, and they had no, uh, concerns with the requirements. Uh, yep, we do have representation here, so they can also speak to that if they want to. When we look at the future land use, uh, this area is, uh, outlined here. It's currently shown as agricultural. Uh, community development staff, we've gone back through and kind of looked at some areas on the fringe of the city. And, um, there, we're not quite sure why this was shown as agricultural. We have kind of two suspicions. Um, one is that it was its proximity to the airport. We really didn't know what compatible uses, uh, might be developed. But also, given the current elevation of this site and the amount of dirt that would have to be removed to make it buildable, um, it could have been seen as that no one would ever take this project on. Um, and so that's why it was always shown as agricultural. Um, however, uh, there is an amendment to the future land use map, um, and the urban service area boundary. This is also outside of the urban service area boundary. Um, however, city staff and Public Works, they said they can adequately serve this. There's utilities in the area. Um, there is an amendment both to the future land use map and the urban service area boundary that are being taken to the planning board in January. Um, and upon a positive recommendation from them would be brought before you, um, shortly thereafter to, to take action on. The future land use that is being recommended for this, for this property is service commercial. Um, so that would be this, uh, magenta color here. Um, that is, uh, we see that a lot of times consistent with, uh, industrial use, uses, um, also community commercial. Uh, the service commercial, um, that would be, allow them to have a industrial commercial services zoning, which is similar to what was allow, uh, provided for Scorpion. Oh, I got ahead of myself. Um, so we, this is the proposed future land use map. Again, um, changing, uh, making a recommendation that we change this from agricultural to service commercial for just this parcel. Uh, the current zoning of the site is a little unusual. Most of it is agricultural. However, there is a small section down here in the southeast corner that is C2, Riley County zoning C2. Uh, I, we don't really have the history of how that, uh, came to be, but there is currently nothing developed, uh, right there on that corner. Um, again, the, the rezoning of this property would come to you in a future item after the property is annexed. Um, but they're looking at industrial commercial services, um, a future business park. Uh, if you have specific questions, I think the property owner would be best equipped to, to answer what, uh, what additional uses they're looking for there. Um, the urban service area boundary, again, um, proposing to extend it, uh, to be able to serve this business park. And no, uh, no concerns from Public Works on, on being able to do that. One of the, um, I guess one of the findings that the Board of County Commissioners has to make with this annexation is that it will not hinder or prevent the proper growth or development of any incorporated city. Um, and given its proximity, this subject property's proximity to Ogden, um, we wanted to make sure that we, um, have acknowledged that this isn't part of Ogden's future growth area. Uh, so you see the proposed annex tract here. Ogden did annex the church that's right, uh, that's adjacent to the property. Um, but in looking at their twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, um, they don't indicate that there is any desire to annex, um, again, the subject property or the Random Woods subdivision that's, um, north and west of that. Um, you do see that, so the Ogden city limits are this black dash line. There's a pretty substantial area outside of that, that they're looking to, um, maybe annex in the future for residential, um, but nothing that referred to this site. So the recommendation before you tonight, um, is to pass a resolution finding that the annexation is advisable for the city of Manhattan. And then also to make the request to the Board of County Commissioners, um, for them to find and determine that the annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or of that of any other incorporated city. Um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, again, we do have the property owner if you have, uh, want to hear from him or have any questions.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, after you remove, after the forty-foot of dirt is removed, um, that, that's the back lots of the subdivision. Would that just be a cliff? Will there be retaining wall? Will there be drainage considerations? How should those residents' land be, um, what? Considered safe and not eroding? We have, um, anyway, that's the question.
Uh, it will not be a cliff. Um, there's going to be, uh, kind of a step-down approach to that. So it'll be more of a hillside than just a straight drop. Um, I can't speak to the erosion control. Um, that's really the intent of this site plan. If that is a concern, we can try to address that with that annexation agreement. Um, that-
A question I would have if I lived there.
Yes. And I think, uh, yeah, Brian Johnson's here too. He might have a better response for you. That's a little bit out of my wheelhouse.
That's okay. I just, it's, the first thought I had was if, uh, especially with that sizable a drop in the-
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Brian Johnson, City Engineer. So from the site plan, they're showing about a four-to-one or a five-to-one, uh, cross slope coming down to tie into those existing. And to give you an idea of what kind of slope that is, uh, out there now, there's about three-to-one slopes. It'll actually be a little bit flatter than what you currently see out there today. So that, that side slope, that tie-in would be like a four-to-one.
For the whole way?
Well-
Just that corner that you're talking about?
Yeah, as they're showing here in their site plan, you could see these four-to-one contours coming down in here. Some of them even flatter. These are probably five or six-to-ones.
Right, that is, yeah.
So they're getting pretty flat as they feather it out. Uh, as far as the erosion control, the applicant has applied for an NOI, Notice of Intent for the state of Kansas, uh, through KDHE.
Okay.
KDHE is who monitors that. We would be the local agency, so we would be the ones that would be, uh, enforcing that and monitoring that. Again, that goes back to the, um, agreement that we have made with them or we are gonna get a lien until that permit is final and completed through KDHE.
Okay. So there is somebody watching over this process?
Yeah, there's two. There's actually the state of Kansas.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, instead of just, uh, we're gonna do what we need to do to do this project and then, uh, residents?
No. And per the NOI-
Okay, thank you.
Before they can close it out, they have to have seventy-five percent ground coverage. So they'll have to replant, you know, I don't know what they're, if they-
Sure.
On farming it or if it's gonna be grass or a chipping wedge. I, I don't know.
Vegetation of some kind to hold the soil. I appreciate your reassurance. Thank you. Stephanie, does it matter, uh, does the, um, Ogden City Council need to know anything or is it just the, um, the county commission?
To my knowledge, it's just the county commission.
Okay.
Yep. Katie, Katie's nodding her head.
And no part of this proposal touches the church that has actually been annexed by Ogden?
It abuts the property.
Does it?
Um, so there's a, uh, let's see if I can go back. I can't zoom in. Um, so it is adjacent to the property right here.
Okay. So they would have to be sent a notice also?
Yes. So there was a thousand-foot notice that was sent to all property owners. They did hold a neighborhood meeting. Um, and really, some of the, the items that were identified in this site plan came from the comments that, that subdivision had at that neighborhood meeting.
I just want- I just wanted to be, thank you.
Stephanie, you might just run through the, the process. So island annexation, commission considers, then we start our normal process with notices of public hearings for annexation or rezoning, right?
Yes, so after, if you find that this annexation is advisable, we will send a resolution, your resolution to the county. The county has 30 days to act upon that resolution. Then, once they approve their resolution, that then starts a 30-day protest period where any affected party, if that's an okay term to use, that they would have the ability to, to file a protest. After that expires, then the first reading of the annexation ordinance would come before you with that annexation agreement. We would have a second reading of that. Because this is currently outside of the city limits, it's outside of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board's jurisdiction, the annexation does not go to them for any sort of recommendation. I do think we'll probably take the rezoning to the planning board, just because they do have purview over the comprehensive plan. We're still trying to see if, if that's something that, we did not do that for Scorpion. We probably will for this one. And then we'll go through your normal rezoning process that we, we typically have. Are there any questions on that process?
That's reassuring, thank you.
Yes.
Yep, thanks, Stephanie. Good, good briefing and, you know, and we need more business park space. That's been one of the goals for a long time, so this is a good way to get some more of it.
In a place that previously was thought undevelopable.
Yes.
So, okay, are there others that wish to? Well, thank you very much for the staff presentation. We'll now have public comment on this item. Does anyone wish to come forward? I'm not going to read this big paragraph if nobody's coming. All right, then I will close the public comment period. And commissioners, you have the opportunity to ask staff for other questions or make a motion.
There you go. Mayor, I move to reapprove Resolution Number 12022E, finding that the annexation of approximately 78.73 acre tract of land, generally located at the northeast corner of Skyway Drive and West 68th Avenue, west of the Manhattan Regional Airport pursuant to KSA 12, 12-520C, is advisable. Based upon the information in the staff report and requesting the Board of County Commissioners, Riley County, find and determine that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that any other incorporated city located within the county.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments or discussion? Okay, Commissioner Hassel made a motion and Commissioner Butler seconded the motion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is to consider rezoning 2129 Fort Riley Lane. And Stephanie Peterson?
Yes, I am back. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. We have for you the rezoning of 2129 Fort Riley Lane. This property is located at the western terminus of Fort Riley Lane, which is kind of generally south of the intersection of Westwood and Fort Riley Boulevard. And it's about an acre. Here, I'm sure that many of you are familiar with the, the pictures that you see here. There, on the property, there is what used to be a single-family home that has been converted into a commercial use. And then at the back of the property, there's a metal-clad building with multiple bays also used for commercial purposes. The current zoning of this property is industrial, light industrial. It's been this way since the 80s. And it is inconsistent with the surrounding zoning, the properties that are surrounding it, as well as what is identified in our future land use map. So it shows that this would be community commercial for this parcel as well. So the property owner is requesting, oh, I should have added, the, this kind of came up. This house is used for star massage therapy. When they came in to renew their massage therapy license, this is when we had found that the property was not zoned correctly. So the massage therapy establishments are not able to be operating in the industrial zoning district. However, given the, like I said, given the surrounding zoning of the surrounding parcels, as well as the future land use map and its identification, staff recommended that the property be rezoned. This did go to the planning board and there were no public comments and they recommended approval unanimously. So then, here is the, the requested action before you this evening to rezone this property from light industrial to community commercial district.
And with massage therapy, there would, is a requirement that the owner has to live on the, in the, in the property?
No, there is not.
Not, okay.
Was it if you were doing it out of a house?
Yes.
You would, it was supposed to be owner occupied?
Yes, correct.
Well, that's what I meant, it's a blue house.
Oh yeah, no one lives there.
If it was in a residential district.
If a residential area.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So are there other comments or other questions of Director of Community Development? Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Is anyone here interested in, in speaking to this issue? I would open the public comment period so that you can come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and ask the commission for a motion.
Can I make a motion that we approve first reading of an ordinance, rezoning 2129 Fort Riley Lane from IL Light Industrial District to CC Community Commercial District, based on the findings in the staff report and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board?
Second.
Who was the second?
John.
John, okay.
I just have a question before we move on.
It's time for comments, that's good.
So I was going to say, did this come about because of our licensing process for massage therapists in our community?
That's how we caught it, was when we reviewed the zoning district and realized that that wasn't a permitted use.
Okay, good. I'm glad that we were able to find it because of that. It makes me wonder what other types of businesses, because sometimes it's just ignorance. They don't know that they're, they need a, a certain type of zoning or whatever it might be. So I'm glad that you all caught it and decided to help them change it. But there are, like, sometimes we come upon nonprofits or other business organizations that set it up from home, but don't realize that we have a zoning mechanism for those areas. So I don't know how we would get that type of information out to the public as more and more people are doing business from home and using that as their business center. So that's for a future discussion, I'm sure. But I'm sure there are several that are in that same position as well. Maybe not for massage therapists, but other, other types of professions.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have a motion and a second, so we're ready already. So we're ready to call the roll, Brenda.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. The next item of, on the agenda is Stephanie Peterson also, but it is to consider annexing North Enclave Edition.
Yes, this and the rezoning of this, and then you're, I think, done with me for this evening. So we have before you the annexation of what was formerly known as North Enclave Edition. As of yesterday, when we received the preliminary plat, it is Autumn Ridge is what they are changing it to. So everything in the slide deck and in your packet says North Enclave, because we didn't find out till late yesterday.
Now, what's the new name?
Autumn Ridge.
Autumn?
Autumn Ridge.
Autumn Ridge, okay.
Yes. This is generally located up in the northwest part of our community, right off of Grandmere Parkway. It is a, what we would define as a donut within our, our city that has not been annexed. Here is a closer look at the 11.9-acre lot or tract. When we look at the future land use map as identified in the Grandmere Master Plan in this area here, it was identified as medium residential. And when we look at the future land use map included in the comprehensive plan, it's identified as medium to high residential. The proposed use of the, of the property is to do a combination of single-family homes as well as some duplexes or townhomes, so attached. The rezoning is up next, but I think it's important that you know they're asking to be rezoned to RLA, which is Single Family Residential Attached Zoning District. That does support both single-family homes as well as that townhome attached residence as well. This did go before the planning board. They had no public comments on it and it was also unanimously approved for, for recommendation back to you all.
How many units?
I believe that there were five single-family homes and maybe eight duplexes. I can go look at Barry's staff report.
I just wanted a general feel, that's fine, thank you.
There's basically going to be, if the preliminary plat stays as is, there's going to be kind of two cul-de-sacs that have those homes on them.
Okay, thank you.
And here's the requested action before you to approve the first reading of an ordinance that would annex this 11.9 acres into the city limits.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak? I'll open the public comment section if there's anyone here to speak. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment section and ask the commission for discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve first reading of an ordinance, ordinance annexing an approximately 11.9 acre tract of land, generally located on the east side of Grandmere Parkway, extending between Grand Champions Drive and Enclave Ridge Circle into the city limits.
I'll second.
We have a, unless there's further discussion, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and the next item, Stephanie, you're up again, is to consider rezoning the Autumn Ridge or North, or North Enclave Edition.
Yes, so I think we're familiar with where the property is located. We spoke about the future land use, that being medium-high residential. And then the Grandmere Master Plan envisioned for this property. Although it, it's a little bit lower density than what the master plan had previously shown, it still has that residential use, so we don't see any issues with that. Currently, the property is owned County PUD, Planned Unit Development, and the requested zoning is the RLA, which is the Low Density Residential Attached District. With that, I will leave you with what the requested action is, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the rezoning.
Planning Board has approved it and...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, planning, it did go to Planning Board. They, no public comments and it was unanimously approved.
Very good, thank you. All right. At this point, we've had the presentation from the city staff member, city administration. Is there anyone here this evening wishing to speak about this issue? I'll open the public comment period, pause and close the public comment period. No one's coming forward. So we would be ready for a motion from the commission?
Mayor, I move that we approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning in an 11.9 acre tract of land, generally located on the east side of Grandmere Parkway, extending between Grand Champions Drive and Enclave, Enclave Ridge Circle from Riley County PUD, Planned Unit Development, to City of Manhattan, RLA, Low Density Residential Attached District, based on the finding in the staff report and recommendation by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve with no further discussion from the commission. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Stephanie, thank you for guiding us through that. It's always technical, I know. The next item on the agenda is to consider the 2023 Chamber of Commerce Economic Development and Fort Riley Promotion Agreements and the 2022 Year-End Report for Economic Development, the 2023 Contract Tourism and Convention Contract and the 2022 Convention and Visitors Bureau Fourth Quarter Report. And Jason Smith, the Executive Director?
President CEO, but head bottle washer, whatever you want, it's fine.
President CEO, I know the CEO part, okay, president of the chamber, so...
Good evening, commissioners. As mentioned, I'm Jason Smith, President, CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today. I always consider this time of the year is, is a great opportunity to talk about what we've done from previous years. This is obviously very early compared to, if you remember, three years ago when we were here at midnight. That was, that was an interesting evening. So we appreciate the earliness of this presentation and we'll try to be brief but still hit all the highlights and make sure that, that we're thorough and talk about what we were able to get done over the last year. It was a great year at the chamber. We're very excited to talk about the results and, and, and some of the things that we were able to accomplish. We have a little bit of a, of a change in how we normally do this. Normally, we have an extended presentation from Karen Hibbert on the Convention Visitors Bureau. Karen is out this week. She is being, she's a new grandmother and she's, we'll let her talk about the details of that on her own social media, but she is in Dallas with her daughter and we wish her well. And so she had visited with the city staff about presenting, or excuse me, submitting their report. And then I would hit a few of the highlights. We do have Jen Alley and Marcia Rozell with us that can answer any specific questions if you have those. And I can certainly answer any of the big picture questions on the program as well. So just a couple of the highlights of our Convention Visitors Bureau. They set a goal this year to have 120, 20 meetings booked. They exceeded that goal in November. They're already at 164 meetings, 164 meetings booked for the future. The other thing that I was encouraged and you, I think you have the numbers in front of you, but we're, we're continuing to, to inch up and approach 2018 numbers for occupancy rates in the hotels. And so, again, as we talk about COVID and the impacts on the various industries in the communities, no one was hit harder than the hospitality industry. And of course, we, we suffered that as well with, at the, with our budget in the Convention Visitors Bureau. And I think Karen, particularly Karen and Marcia, who manned the office for about two years on their own, did an outstanding job bringing us back. And then adding Jen Alley this year has only bolstered our team and, and their ability to attract new meetings, conferences, supporting events and leisure travelers. Another item that we're proud of, the TAC awarded, which is the Kansas Transportation Group, awarded us a marketing award for best social media campaign this year. And again, that's something we spend a lot of time and effort and, and take a great pride in is, is our social media efforts and tourism. Karen and her team launched a Treat 'Em Right Hospitality Training Program this year. That helps some of the restaurants and retailers and, and hotels train their staff to be more friendly and greeting guests and making sure not only are they managing that facility well, but also representing the community in, in a positive way. We have 89 certified training folks already this year. And so we continue to see that increase in terms of the number of people that are taking those tests and those trainings. And, and we think that'll ultimately help, certainly in repetitive visitors, if people have a good experience when they come to the community.
Jason, I think that is critical. I appreciate the chamber doing that. The perception of our visitors and the, they receive from the people in our businesses is critical to them returning.
Hundred percent agree. Not only to visit, but Karen always reminds me, everybody that moves to Manhattan visits first. And so we want them to have a good experience when they're visiting. If they're considering moving here, whether they're interviewing for a job or they're retiring or considering going to school or all the other things that, that are involved in that. At the encouragement of Commissioner Butler, we continue to grow our Spirit of the Holidays marketing campaign and, and that, we are going to eventually become the Christmas center of Kansas if we're not already. Our partnership in that realm is, is as strong as it's ever been. And we get all those groups together and they do a great job planning out the marketing strategies for that. And then the last item, and I believe Jason distributed the visitors guides, is that, so you all have copies of the... so you all have copies of the visitors' guides. Those are basically brand new, and those will be in the lobby here of of City Hall for anybody that needs a copy. One of the unique things for this year's visitors' guide is Bridget Everett has marked her favorite things, and of course, we had Bridget Everett Day this year, and so it's a unique way to celebrate Manhattan and some of the the spots. The other thing that I think turned out really well is there's a mural walk where they, we have all the mur, the new murals throughout the community that are located and where you can find them, so you can walk around and and identify all the murals. Those are, those are extremely popular, and and so we thought it was a great way to highlight that. And so, any questions about that, I'm happy to answer, or we can bring Marcia or Jen up to to answer those as well. I do want to give an update on the other big item, of course, is Karen announced her retirement, and she is targeting the end of February for that. We put together a small committee to to help with that process, including representatives for throughout the hospitality industry. From the commission, we've asked Commissioner Ready to serve on that committee. She will be your representative on the CVB Steering Committee next year, and so we thought that was the appropriate person. We will go out for, we, we hired a firm, so we have a national firm that's helping us with that search for a couple of reasons. Number one, the Manhattan job is a desirable job, and so we think that there will be a lot of people who are interested in that. That doesn't mean the best person isn't in Manhattan, but we think that it's important and for the taxpayers to know that they got the best person. And and so we are going to advertise that nationally and and look for candidates across the country or across the region. We hired a firm to help us with that, Searchwide Global. Their most recent placement that we're aware of is they helped Topeka find their new CVB Director, and I think everybody's pleased with how that process went. Topeka got a great report from from Matt over there on that. So we anticipate we'll start advertising in January for that and hopefully have somebody in place in March. Karen has said she'd, she'd help us if we needed her in the interim and and, but we have a great team that I'm very confident in if we need to have a little space in between Karen and the next director. So I know Karen's watching too, so I'm sure she can text me if if there's a question specific to Karen. She, she told, I don't know why she decided she was going to watch, but she's watching. So any questions on the CVB report?
Hundred and sixty-four meetings is significant, and the year isn't over.
And we're not done, right? I think Jen's probably got some, she's ready to close it. Yeah, there we go. So Jen's been a great addition. Of course, Marcia's stalwart of the program, and I just can't say enough about our entire team at the chamber. They all have done a great job. So that brings us to military relations. And and again, much like the CVB, we're, we're in transition. Janet Nichols, who has done a great job in that program for nearly a decade, announced that she was taking a position with the Kansas Department of Veteran Affairs, and she's the Director of External Affairs for that group. And we wish her well, and we were all sad to see her go, and, but, but think it's a great opportunity for her to advance her career and 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 do some of the work that she really loves to do. We're not doing a national search for that, although we would take, I guess, applications if that was appropriate. But what we are doing is we have not done an examination of that program in a decade. And so as we were thinking about all of the work, and Janet did an enormous amount of work in that position, that it would be incredibly unfair to put all those things down, hand it to somebody new, and say, here, go do this. And so what we want to do is make sure we're prioritizing the work of that office. And so we, we've put together a small group of the funders, including the city. So Ron Fear is is meeting with that group as, the city funds about a third of the military relations program. Riley County funds a portion, and so Commissioner Ford is is representing Riley County. And then we have the Little Apple Brigade, and so we have some volunteers from that group. And then the chamber funds about a third of that program as well through Advantage Manhattan. And they are putting together the prioritized goals and objectives of that program, as well as the metrics that we're going to use to evaluate whether it's being successful or not. And we think that is an opportunity to provide somebody a much better framework and allows them to be successful much sooner than if we just say, go do what Janet did, because quite frankly, that would be incredibly difficult for somebody to come in and do that. So I appreciate Ron and and the other people who have volunteered to help with that process. We'll start advertising that position in January, and hopefully we can fill that quicker because we think that that there'll be some local targets for that. And in fact, I've already gotten two or three phone calls of people interested. So we're excited about that. I'm happy to answer any questions about either one of those processes because those are very important, not just to the chamber, but to the...
I found myself wondering if Janet's position is part-time or full-time, if it's only the city funding, or if there are other sources.
Mm-hmm.
And I...
Well, we, we see it as a full-time position, and and again, we're, we're taking a hard look at, and Ron can certainly comment on this too, because he's been involved with this program much longer than I have, and Christine Benny, who's going to come do the, the, the full report, can answer this as well. We see it as a full-time job. Certainly what Janet was doing was more than a full-time job because she had so much passion for it. As I mentioned, the city funds about a third of the total budget for military relations. About a third comes from the chamber through the Advantage Manhattan commitments from the private sector. And then about a third is kind of split between Riley County and the Little Apple Brigade and the sponsors for a variety of events that we have, like the luncheon. So the city funds about a third of the total budget, so they get about a two-to-one match for their dollars on that program.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I've always wondered.
Yeah, and it's a good question, and we should make sure we address that every...
No, thank you.
All right. With that, I get the honor of introducing our Military Relations Committee Chair this year, Christine Benny, has has been serving in that role since the beginning of this year. And and she's been very gracious enough to agree to do this year's report, and it's, it's always nice when you get a volunteer who's willing to help. And Christine has been outstanding, not just throughout this year, but in this transition period, and and been a big leader for our organization. And so I'm grateful that that she's with us tonight, so.
Thank you. So, yeah? Yep. I don't know. Just the word even, that's it. I think you can just get the... There we go. Well, this is my first time to be in this position, so this is kind of exciting. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Fort Riley continues to be a major driver of our local, regional, and state economy with a full economic impact exceeding over $4 billion in fiscal year 2021. This information is compiled and released by Fort Riley in their annual Economic Impact Survey. The report is accessible anytime on the Fort Riley website. The next report will be issued early next year, and we anticipate having copies of the leaders retreat in January. As you can see on the slide, the following populations connected to Fort Riley generate the bulk of the economic impact to the area. You can see those numbers on there. Efforts related to advocacy, engagement, and economic development are directed toward protecting and enhancing these populations, thus making this region a great place to call home and ensuring continued economic impact. The First Infantry Division continues to play a critical role in Eastern Europe with the First ID's Second Armored Brigade Combat Team, which is approximately 4,500 soldiers, starting to deploy and actually have mostly deployed to Eastern Europe, replacing First Brigade, which came back earlier in the fall. And the, and the first headquarters, I'm sorry, the One ID Headquarters and the division artillery that are stationed there now will be coming back early next year, probably the February timeframe. The chamber has been leading regular meetings of regional partners, as well as the Kansas Military Alliance during this important time. We get together at least once a month with several of the military stakeholders, the Governor's Military Council, to make sure that we're ensuring that relationship. Impact Aid, a key, a key advocacy win occurred at the state level earlier this year. Impact Aid was designed to assist local school districts that have lost property tax revenue due to the presence of tax-exempt federal poverty or that have experienced increased expenditures due to the enrollment of federally connected children, like those at USD 383. At question was the appropriate distribution of $17 million in federal funds across the state. This year, Kansas was the last state in the nation to distribute federal Impact Aid across the state using the equalization formula, as the Department of Defense makes basing decisions based on the military family quality of life and knowing that basing decisions can be made without those base realignment and closure, or BRAC. And then One ID had, had lost an infantry brigade, about 4,500 soldiers, back in 2014 without a BRAC, and it was imperative that this change was properly satisfy, I'm sorry, satisfy the DOD requirements of the distribution of the Impact Aid funds. Not only, not only for the impact to school districts, but to protect Fort Riley's division's flag and keep the $4 billion in economic impact and the 16,000 soldiers and their families stationed at Fort Riley in the state of Kansas. And luckily, this was accomplished. Janet Nichols worked along with the Governor's Military Council, Perry Wiggins, and spoke with many in the Topeka area, explaining the importance of this change and not only to our school district, but to our state. And additionally, yeah, we're still here. Additionally, the Purple Star School Program was unanimously approved by Kansas State Board of Education. This program will allow all schools in the state of Kansas to qualify for the designation, helping schools to respond to educational challenges that face military-connected students during the transition to new schools. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program provides funds for infrastructure projects in the communities that neighbor military installations, where the project adds military value to both community and especially the installation. This year's joint project effort was selected, selected the Riley Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is the road that goes into Fort Riley, I mean, yeah, into Fort Riley through Ogden, for submission to the Department of Defense and the Office of Local Defense Community Corporation for consideration. This was done with the support of One ID and Fort Riley Commanding General Major General John Meyer, who wrote the endorsement for the project included in the submission. Unfortunately, this project was not selected as part of this year's DCP cycle. However, remember that last year's DCP submission was the Manhattan Regional Airport Runway Expansion Project that was selected for this DOD funding, so that's a good thing.
Six million.
This year, the annual meeting, the AUSA Annual Meeting was held in October, and this is the first time it was back at full strength following the pandemic. And for our contingent, we had all three counties representing our community traveling to DC for the event, Riley Pot County and Gary County. Janet also attended the Association of the Defense Communities Innovation Conference, which was held in November in Phoenix. This conference, conference continues to be a great forum to learn more about what communities are doing to support the military installations. The KEEP Tour was held on Thursday, November 17th, where transitioning soldiers and their families received presentations from Kansas State University, Manhattan Area Technical College, and toured the Veterans Center on, on K-State's campus. They received a presentation for Fort Riley's, from Fort Riley's Transition Assistance Program and toured several different local businesses, including Menko Window, Parker and Hanifin, and High Tech Interiors. There were 29 transitioning soldiers that attended and plans are underway to make this a biennial event. And I know Amber was a huge, huge part of that, so her and Janet worked together. Of course, one of the things that Janet worked really hard on was community engagement. The Manhattan MRC Lunches hosted a diverse list of guest speakers and a wide variety of high-profile speakers that, from Fort Riley and the surrounding areas. The MRC, there are some of the different speakers that we had, which is a great list. Dr. Bob was great at the very end. I'm kind of partial to him. Let's see. The MRC Lunches are truly the best place for local Manhattanites to interact with Fort Riley uniform and civilian personnel and their families. The Little River Brigade Ball took place in November. Two new members were recruited on site. This was the last time General Meyer and Command Sergeant Major Mullinax would be in the Manhattan area until they come home from deployment in February. We also saw a handful of military spouses attending together while their partners were deployed. It was a really fun event. We had to move tables. In July, the Military Family Appreciation Night at the Call Valley Rodeo is a fun, family-friendly and free event for soldiers and families of Fort Riley. All our sponsors in Riley County funding was retained in 2022, enabling to purchase 1,500 tickets to distribute to soldiers for free. Fort Riley once again assisted with the distribution of these tickets. Fort Riley Day at K-State was held September 17th in conjunction, in conjunction with K-State versus Tulane football game. The Veterans Day Parade was a huge success with participation from K-State's ROTC program, city and county commissioners, local high school bands, and flyover was provided by Fort Riley. A commemorative program took place following the parade at Peace Memorial Auditorium with guest speaker Colonel Retired Leroy Stutz. The winner of the Veterans Day Essay Contest was also announced. Another program that came in very last minute but was able to get done was the Operation Green Light. It was all the lights, or all the light posts all downtown Points Avenue were lit up in green to honor our nation's veterans. Operation Green Light was made possible through collaboration between the Military Relations Committee, Flint Hills Veterans Coalition, Riley County, Downtown Manhattan, American Legion Pierce Keller Post Number 17, and the VFW Post 1786. Freddie's placed donation boxes at all the restaurants across the nation, and they were, they chose a nonprofit to receive all these funds. Freddie's was incredible, impressed by the work done by the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition, so they decided to donate all the money to them, which totaled over $8,000 to promote As we know, the MRC program is an integral part of the community. Janet was fantastic in this role, and as Jason said, this committee is, will be working diligently to serve, to ensure this program continues to promote Manhattan and the region as well as Fort Riley. And as the MRC Chair, and on behalf of the MRC Executive Committee, I appreciate presenting tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No questions, just appreciate the presentation and all the work you do and the rest of your committee and everyone else involved in supporting Fort Riley and veterans in general, and just want to wish Janet well in her new position. Hate to see her go, but I'm sure she's on to bigger and better things for, for veterans. So again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. It's good to have the, the details periodically.
Appreciate that, Christine. Just a couple of things, updates on the military side as well. Most of you are aware that the European conflict became a huge issue in 22. Janet led this effort in, in making, as we continue to hear rumors that there was a push to move division back to Europe, of course, we were the last one out. We, we put together a group of, of stakeholders from Junction City here in the state and made sure that we met regularly with our delegation to find out what they were hearing, because obviously they hear more than we do. Our understanding from our delegation, and and they, they have pledged to tell us if they hear different, is that the preference among the leadership in the Army is to continue rotational, where, where units are going in rotational and not relocating a full division, or just continue to keep our, on that. We have registered that we feel like that we're taxed on that rotation more than some of our other peers, and that we would like that to be a consideration going forward. We'd like to have people, have our folks at home, and I know their families would too. Couple other items that, that rose to being important in that is making sure that, that readiness locally is important. So on the federal level, we have been working with our delegation to make sure that funds are available to renovate the railhead at Camp Funston. That, that is what allows us to be very responsive and and win awards for logistics, and, and also is important for military readiness. We need to make sure that we, that stays modernized. And then the other one is barracks, because you can't add missions, and you can't add programs, you don't have space for them to live, and, and, and we feel like we are making progress on both of those avenues. And so there is a very strong component to that, that's, that's policy-related. Last thing I'll mention is, we also feel very strongly that Kansas does not resource its military affairs program to, certainly the level of our peers. And so we are putting in our agenda this year... And so we are putting in our agenda this year, and I believe it's referenced briefly in the, in the city's agenda, that, that the governor's office and the legislature should consider additional funding for the Military Relations Office that's now part of the Department of Commerce. It's very important for us that we continue to have contacts in Washington that can get good information and then deliver the Kansas message. And so you're going to hear a lot more about that from us this year. So with that, are we, let's see. Is it this one? Nope. Nope, I do not. Okay. So, we'll get into our Economic Development Report. As you remember, we have a team of economic developers that, that work on this, this program. And a couple of years ago, we consolidated our annual report. We used to do three different annual reports, the city, KBED or KSU IP and the Chamber, got confusing, a little convoluted. And so, which is actually pretty remarkable that we're able to bring our three groups together and consolidate this report to you at one time, so that you get the full breadth of the economic development activities in the community. We were discussing at our board meeting today, and then we had a brief reception for the outgoing mayor, that it's been five years since we launched, at the time, Greater Manhattan Project, which eventually became Region Reimagine. And if you remember, that was, that was a packet that had about twelve hundred action items, and, and over the period of the next couple of years, we worked with our partners to get that to a more manageable number. And, and now Region Reimagine's strategy basically breaks into four categories: jobs, talent, entrepreneurship, and innovation. And then we came up with a much more manageable amount of objectives under, under those goals to where it's, it's easier for you all to see what we're doing and for us to report what we're doing. You have a copy of the consolidated annual report, I believe, at your, at your desk, as well as the appendix that outlines the objectives per the contract, and, and so we're happy to answer questions on that. Just briefly, I want to talk a little bit about what you're going to hear today, just in terms of overall impact. I'm proud to announce that over this last year, we had eight hundred ninety-nine new jobs announced. Now again, five hundred of those were, were in one project, but even to have three hundred ninety-nine additional on top of that is pretty remarkable compared to where we were in the previous two decades. I will address Commissioner Hattasaw's comment. We do not, we do not do jobs retained in any of our reports. So those are all new jobs that, that have been announced to the community. That is not taken into account the two hundred, or the hundred twenty more jobs, for instance, that we expect to get from KBED or any other projects that had previously been announced. That represents seven hundred, over seven hundred million dollars of new capital investment, which translates into seven point eight million of annual property tax revenue to the city after abatements, and thirteen point nine new retail sales tax revenue over twenty years through spending from those jobs, which those folks will earn a billion of personal income over the twenty years, and thirteen hundred new residents to the community. We talked about, three, four years ago, as we were implementing Region Reimagine, that one of the challenges that we had collectively as a community is we become a little stagnant in our job growth and our population growth. This is how we can turn that around, and I'm proud to be a small part of this effort. You're going to hear from the rest of the group that, that played a much larger role in that than I did tonight. And we're going to start with some of our innovation efforts, and it's my pleasure to introduce Rebecca Robinson, who is the Chief Corporate Engagement and Economic Development Officer for Kansas State University Innovation Partners, and quite frankly, one of the smartest people I know. And so I'm, I'm pleased to get to introduce her and let her talk about what we've done in innovation with our economic development program.
Thanks, Jason, and hello, Mayor and Commissioners. Jason's also on the Innovation Partners Board and the KBED Board, so he also decides if I keep my job or not, so. But I appreciate the nice, he still doesn't have to say nice things about me. You've heard from me many times over the last fourteen years of my tenure at K-State Innovation Partners. And in all, most of these presentations, innovation's not usually first in our presentation. We usually have jobs or talent typically at the start of our presentation. But this year, we're kicking off our economic development presentation, highlighting our success in innovation, largely because of the role that it played in the success, the tremendous amount of success that we've seen over the last year, that both was focused or leveraging the, the strengths we have in innovation, but also transcend the four areas of talent, entrepreneurship, jobs, and innovation. So I'm going to talk through a handful of, of the stories that are included in the projects, the successes that you have in, in the written report that provide a lot more detail on each of those projects. And we're going to kick it off with the Edge Collaboration District. I don't have to repeat what that is, is you heard a very detailed presentation tonight from Greg and Greg on the updates for that district. But I just want to reiterate how important both infrastructure and space are for our economic development strategies, particularly around innovation, and for companies that are looking at our region, that are interested in being located near K-State or in our community in general, near MBAF. Those, these innovation district models of having space available for companies is a competitive advantage for us as a community. So in addition to investments that folks like the foundation and others are making in our region to have physical infrastructure, I also want to thank the commission for your investments in the corridor. That infrastructure and the, the investments that you all have made also add to that competitiveness for us in the community. Next up is our pet food activities related to K-State. This is an area where, it's an example of some of the unique things that we do, the unique approaches that we do to have exposure to companies that might not typically think about this region as a place to locate or to grow a business. This year, we hosted KibbleCon, which is a pet food industry conference focused on highlighting both the innovation at K-State in that area, as well as market opportunities and economic opportunities in that, that industry sector. From those events, we meet companies at those events. So we had about a hundred and eighty attendees this year from about eighteen different states, all here, learning about both the assets of the region and the university. From those, from those kinds of interactions, we develop partnerships with those companies that then become a part of our economic development pipeline. From there, we engage our partners, both within KBED, the city, the Chamber, the K-State Foundation, others, to then try to develop partnerships that can result in a physical nexus here. I'm hopeful that this year, we might announce one in the pet food industry. Stay tuned. Next up is K-State's Economic Prosperity Plan. And a couple of weeks ago, we celebrated the one-year anniversary of the announcement of the, the public announcement of that plan. Again, that is K-State's commitment to create over three thousand jobs, at least three thousand jobs and three billion dollars in direct investment in the state of Kansas within ten years. I'm pleased to announce that we are on track with those job creation and investment goals to meet or exceed them. And a few of the other projects I'm going to talk about are prime examples of the kinds of successes that we expect to see in the decade ahead. First, Hydrograph. In May, we announced that Hydrograph Clean Power, a Canadian startup company that licensed a graphene technology from, that was developed in our K-State Physics Department, would be, would be developing its commercial-scale manufacturing facility right here in Manhattan, close to its R and D, close to the talent pipelines that know that technology. Here, they will produce graphene nanomaterials and hydrogen for a wide range of industries. And over the next several years, the company plans to expand their production, which will result in the creation of over a hundred really high-paying jobs. Next up on the list is Radiation Detection Technologies, another K-State-related startup company. Radiation Detection Technologies develops, develops and manufactures semiconductors, radiation detection, and electronic circuit technologies. Late this year, they announced a four million dollar investment in Potawatomi County in a foundry facility and the creation of approximately thirty new jobs over the next five years. Finally, this year, MBAF had a number of momentous occasions. First, we finished construction of the facility, and by the end of this year, also expect to have the facility commissioned. Currently, MBAF has over two hundred and forty-five full-time employees hired, with more than four hundred total expected after the science missions are transferred from Plum Island, which will take place over the next couple of years. As those science missions transition here, we're seeing an influx of, of conversations around what collaboration looks like with those science teams, where companies might be able to partner with the facility and those science missions as well. So it's an exciting next step in what has been a very long partnership with USDA and Next up, no economic development presentation in 2022 would be complete without mentioning Scorpion Biological Services. I know you all have heard a lot about Scorpion since the announcement in April, so I don't think I need to spend much time explaining what the project is. But from an innovation perspective, we continue to work closely with the company to address what will be significant talent, workforce, and research needs. We have multiple proposals out for both federal and state funds to support the, particularly the infrastructure that will be needed at K-State and at the Manhattan Area Technical College, to both grow our existing academic programs and the numbers of students and, that go through those programs, as well as build new programs that meet their talent needs. We're also building strategies to recruit students to those programs and ultimately retain them in Manhattan, including folks like transitioning soldiers and other non-traditional populations. Everything from certificate kinds of programs, micro credentials through PhD-level education. I would just finish by restating that the partnerships between higher education, the community, the state, Fort Riley, and MBAF were critical for Scorpion's attraction. And it allowed us to be, that innovation capability allowed us to have a competitive advantage that allowed them to choose to locate in Manhattan. That continues to be a competitive advantage for Manhattan, and there are tremendous amount of future opportunities for us to continue leveraging those partnerships for economic development. I'm going to now pass the baton to Darren Solden from the Manhattan Chamber to share more about our progress this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and present this evening. I'm going to pick that baton up and keep going here, talk a little bit about Scorpion. I just want to note, first off, we were here an awful lot middle part of the year, talking about Scorpion. For every time we were here in this room, whether it be for a city commission meeting or, or planning meeting or otherwise, there were countless hours of, of city staff time that goes into, to supporting all of that and making sure that that runs smoothly. So want to thank Ron and his team at the city, in addition to the Commissioners, for their support of the annexation process and some of the other moving parts that were necessary to advance that part of the project. It really was a collaborative effort and, and I think a job well done across the board. So we appreciate the, appreciate those, those efforts. Obviously, with that, with that part of it done, annexation, the, the property art there's done, a fair amount of site prep, the company and the developer continue to, to do work on their end, and we look forward to some of the more active and visible parts of that project picking back up in, in first quarter of this next year, is, is what we've been, what we've been told. So look for more to come there in the early part of 2023. This is a list, we shared a similar list mid-year report. There are fortunately some additional companies added to it, but I just want to highlight a couple of these, kind of moving down the list. We've talked about Scorpion. Canopy was a company that spun out of K-State. They have established a physical presence down at Juliet and Humboldt this year in an office building, the O'Varney Associates Building. And so, good chance, haven't driven by there recently, take a look, really nice sign out front, but that's a company that's added, added quality, high-paying jobs, hiring K-State graduates and, and physically locating in the community. BevHub, who the city did an economic development agreement with a couple of years ago, out at the Business Park near the airport, continues to grow, have added a second shift, have added some warehousing space in the market, and, and we look forward to continuing to work with them, and we remain engaged with them on, on future opportunities. Kansas Gas Service and Walters Morgan Construction out at the Business Park by the airport, both have made significant investments out there over the last several years and continue to add jobs. Covetris is one that moved, they moved a couple of locations within the region. They continue to outgrow locations, which is a good problem to have, but are now located in the second, at the second floor of the Rally House Building down in Aggieville. Again, they utilize, they've got direct connection there on the second floor of the parking garage to where their office is. Really the first major office client, I think, that down in that part of the community in Aggieville, since the, since the parking garage, we hope the first of, of many, to make that more of an eighteen-hour-a-day district and get folks down there during the day, help coffee shops, help restaurants, help other businesses in that area with, with additional customers. And so I've been really excited to see their growth, and they've added well over a hundred people this year, not all of them working there every, every day, but, but within, within the region and with their, their model that they have for in-office work. They've got significant number of people there. And so finally, just want to highlight that, you know, this, this to Rebecca's point about it, innovation driving so much of the successes, we continue to have a very active and robust, really a, a national and global business recruitment campaign through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, our partnership with Potawatomi County Economic Development. And so there's some more information in the annual report. I'm not going to spend time going through all the numbers, but really impressive when you start looking at the reach of that campaign, the amount of engagement, the amount of website views, of engagements on social media, on LinkedIn, grew LinkedIn by three times this last year. Those efforts pay dividends. The, the content that's been created, that you can see on the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership site at greatermanhattan.org, when we go to conferences, when we go engage with, with Team Kansas, traveling around the country and, and, and doing prospecting trips and talking to companies and talking to site selectors, they know Manhattan, they know the good work that's going on in Kansas, there's some great success stories, and it's, it's really important that Manhattan continues to be part of that overall momentum that's going on within the state. Speaking of momentum, we talked about seven hundred million dollars worth of capital investment on that slide that Jason looked at earlier. If we go in and start throwing in some of these other projects and, and look at the next several years, and we're talking north of one billion dollars in total investment in this, in this community that's planned. We've talked a lot about the Edge Collaboration District and, and all of these projects, but one thing that I want to highlight tonight, that you are very, all very well aware of, is that the city is playing a very important role in all of these projects. And we obviously, as, as economic development practitioners, appreciate that and appreciate that investment, looking for future return that's gone into these. So North Campus Corridor, infrastructure projects that are, that are ongoing, that are supporting the Edge Collaboration District, the Aggieville TIF District, that's, that's ultimately helping support a sixty million-plus private investment in the Midtown Project with the, with the improvements down in that district, the Museum of Art and Light with the, the Star Bond proceeds that are, that are pointed towards that project and the, and the private capital investment that's also part of that. These are really impactful, meaningful, long-term catalyst investments in this community, and it truly is an exciting time for Manhattan, and, and we're appreciative of the role that the city plays in facilitating these projects. So we talk about announcements, we talk about new jobs, and, and that's all well and good, but, but ultimately, I think it's also very important that we remember, all of this investment is great, part of our job as economic developers is to do the work to build the ecosystem, address the challenges, and, and help companies grow, whether those be new companies to the community or existing companies. And that really is one of the reasons why we established our Business Retention and Expansion Program. George Cant in our office, our Business Retention and Expansion Manager, continues to be a rock star in that area. He, he visits companies, he's shared with all of you, I think, at Intergovernmental and then through some other avenues, our Business Conditions Report that he, that he publishes on an annual basis. We get some really good data, we identify issues that companies may be having that we can help deliver value to help them resolve, we identify potential projects. It's important to remember that often times, some of our best economic development prospects are existing companies that may be looking to grow. And so as we continue to, to work that program, and, and George continues to do that work, I just want to highlight two things from this last year. One was that he made an incredible effort. This was done in conjunction with Jack Alston at Potawatomi County Economic Development, but they visited all of the financial and lending institutions within our, within our area, and then held a Lenders Lunch at the end of July, where we presented on Network Kansas Programs, on, there's some new Kansas Department of Commerce Programs we'll touch on in our Entrepreneurship Section. There are some great new funding programs for small businesses out there. And so reaching out to all of those banks, all those lending institutions, bringing them together to talk about resources is paying dividends. We're seeing, working with the Small Business Development Center, we're seeing more and more folks coming in because their bank has, has encouraged them to come talk about a specific program. We hope to continue to build those programs, and again, we'll talk about that a little bit tonight in the Entrepreneurship Section. bit tonight in the Entrepreneurship Section. The other one is a company that Rebecca talked about, Radiation Detection Technologies. This speaks to the value of a strong business retention program. This is a company that, you know, has grown out of K-State, actually leases office space at K-State, has some off-campus space in the region as well, looking at growth opportunities. When companies start looking at growth opportunities, and a company has been successful, there are others out there in our shoes that are looking to recruit them other places. But because we had a relationship and because George had done the work and we were aware of some of these opportunities the company had, we were able to bring a team together, both local and at the state level, to present them with some solutions, get them connected with some state incentive programs. Ultimately, they were able to apply for and get a $2.9 million base grant through the Kansas Department of Commerce and have just recently, within the last couple of months, announced expansion projects, some new equipment and some additional capabilities that they're going to do in the region. And so, we're able to keep them here versus them going to a larger metro, larger unnamed metro area, not too terrible far away. So, those kinds of things are important. It is really vital that we're working closely with our existing businesses, not just recruiting new, because it has an impact. In this case, that's 30 new jobs over the next five years, high-paying jobs, almost the entire company is K-State graduates. Those are the kind of folks that we want to see growing here. Workforce Housing, obviously approved the committee tonight, we look forward to being part of that process going forward, and really do believe it was important that that was included in that last Economic Development Sales Tax question, and look forward to being part of that, part of developing solutions there going forward. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is an area that not only has the Chamber been more involved in this past year at a community level, but hit home first. The Chamber established a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. One of the first things that that committee took on was developing some bylaw recommendations for our organization, which were adopted by the Chamber Board of Directors. And then moving beyond that, have partnered with multiple different entities in the community, including McCall and Gordon Construction on a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Programming, and participated in things like the Kansas State University, KSU Unite Program. So we'll continue to engage in that space and think that there's a lot of opportunity there to grow, and some partners in the community, they're doing very, very good work. Finally, on that section, Child Care. In addition to putting together, which we talked about in our mid-year report, a proposal to the State Spark Committee, along with the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, for a child care incubation facility in the community. We've also been actively involved with the Metal Group, Manhattan Emporia, Topeka Lawrence, and just within the last week, held a child care luncheon with, in Topeka, where all of the legislators from our region. So, draw a pretty big portion of the states covered by those communities and the surrounding areas, those legislators were invited and participated in a conversation about child care and advancing solutions at the state level. Riley County has also engaged there and brought in folks from Thrive Kansas to talk about how we can better advocate as a community and as invested citizens and to develop child care solutions. So, we'll continue to push these things forward. Again, these aren't always the things that get splashed across the front of the newspaper or talked about in press releases, but this is vitally important work as we build the economic development in the community. The last piece of that there, which really deserves its own slide, so it got it, is talent. Amber Wilhelm, our Talent Strategies Coordinator, continues to do just incredible work here, building a program from scratch. I've highlighted a few of the things we're involved in up here on the screen. Made for Manhattan is really the brand that a lot of this talent recruitment and retention fits under. Amber, over the course of 2022, participated in career and veteran fairs at universities and across a wide spectrum of communities, multiple states, ultimately participating in events that had over 11,000 attendees. So we are out beating the drum and taking the word to the street on job opportunities in Manhattan. There's a jobs page that was established this last year that highlights companies in the Manhattan area that are hiring, and Amber's using those resources and our Made for Manhattan website, madeformanhatten.org, and associated new video and print content that we're developing to tell the story of Manhattan, why this is a great place to be, why it's a great place to start or advance a career, and what opportunities currently exist. In your annual report, there's some good notes in there, there's some testimonials from some companies in K-State about how they're using some of these Made for Manhattan materials. We're also doing a lot, and Amber is very convenient because she also runs our Young Professionals Program, Hype, is doing some things with Hype to advance our engagement from a talent standpoint. We hosted an intern lunch this last, end of this last summer, brought in a K-State football player, Julius Brens, to talk to the group right ahead of football season, which was a lot of fun up at the football stadium, and next year, look for a much more robust summer-long program for folks that are doing internships, summer internships in Manhattan. Touched on the Fort Riley Keep Tour earlier, that's been a point of emphasis for us this year and will continue to be going forward, getting on post. I think, you know, we talk about this internally a lot, there's no shortcuts on this, we've just got to get in front of people. We can do all the social media and all the websites that, you know, and all of that online that we can, we'll continue to do that, but at some point, you've got to get in front of people and talk to them about opportunities and sell them on why they need to, why they need to look at staying here in the area. And Amber's doing a great job. Janet played a very, very critical role in establishing that presence on post, making sure we're getting in front of soldiers and their families when they first get here, make sure we're getting in front of them while they're going through the transition out process, and being a resource all the way along the way. So excited about that. And last, but most definitely not least, really, this Manhattan Area Technical College expansion, many of you were at the, I think all of you were at the groundbreaking here, one of those good early winter cold days, but really excited about where this is taking us, not just with Scorpion, but across a number of different industries, the educational opportunities that will come out of this expanded space, and MATC's future plans are going to be incredibly impactful in this area, and more and more, we're seeing that companies, whether they're, no matter what industry they're in, need folks with this technical education. And so, appreciate Jim and his team for all that they're doing there. So with that, we're going to transition over onto the entrepreneurial side of what's going on in economic development. Want to welcome up Sarah Siders, Executive Director of Spark, to talk a little bit. We work with a couple really key partners in entrepreneurship, one of them is Spark, and one of them is the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills. Both of them are doing some great work when it comes to programming and direct engagement with entrepreneurs. So Sarah's going to talk a little bit about Spark, and then Doug Barrett, who is the Vice President of Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills and owner of 400 North Creative, is going to come up and talk some about what the Black Entrepreneurs are doing and some of their goals going forward.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. Good to be with you this evening and good to be able to provide another update on what Spark has been up to over the last year throughout 2022. Again, just to refresh all of our memory on what Spark has been tasked to do, our goal is to develop and promote resources and training for entrepreneurs in those earliest stages of starting their business, improve connections to resources for entrepreneurs, and communicate the stories of local entrepreneurs, so that not just our community, but the region, the state, and across the country, that the stories of the people who are starting businesses here can begin to hear what kinds of businesses are starting and hear about how this is a hospitable and nurturing and welcoming environment for entrepreneurship. So, we've been working on those initiatives since we launched, and before we dive into more specific programming, I just want to give kind of a snapshot of some of the things that have been going on over the last year. So one of the things that we've been really excited about is the Manhattan Professional Mentor Program, and we worked with the established business leaders at the Manhattan Chamber and also with Hype to launch that program. And so, there are about 40 or more of these professional mentors who are, again, experienced business leaders, and 33 of them have signed up to provide entrepreneurship and business leadership and mentorship. So that is an extraordinary benefit for the entrepreneurs and people who are just getting started in their businesses to have access to that kind of experience and wisdom. So we're very excited about that. We also really focused in on the storytelling aspect, as I mentioned. So we were able to tell, to write 50 business features over the last year for entrepreneurs, and so those are sometimes covering news as businesses are opening or just kind of featuring those, the specific business owners. And what's been really exciting is they have enormous organic reach. People love to share the stories of, you know, of their businesses being featured, and so they've been shared hundreds of times with thousands of impressions, and it's just really been an extraordinary response, and so we're excited to keep that going in the next year. In three separate pitch competitions, $27,000 was awarded to seven local entrepreneurs, again, in those earliest stages where even small amounts of capital injections can make a huge difference. Spark's sponsors have contributed $25,000 to entrepreneurial programming, so that's been really exciting to see additional private and corporate investment that has been contributed again this year. As well, Spark has sponsored or supported 47 entrepreneurship-focused events over the last year with 300 in attendance for those events. So, one of the most important things that we do is providing practical, accessible entrepreneurship education, and we do that through our fast-track-based programming. This is a nationally-recognized curriculum, and so we've hosted a number of different cohorts since we got started this year in the spring. We hosted two cohorts, and we graduated 14 entrepreneurs from those specific cohorts. 85% of those graduates are women or minority-owned businesses, and 82% of those entrepreneurs are currently operating or plan to open within the next year. So these are people that are being equipped to actually take action on opening their business or starting with a strong foundation. This isn't necessarily someone who just has an idea and wants to, you know, sit in a group and talk about their idea. This is someone who's taking action, who's putting their skin in the game and really getting serious about opening that business. And so those are the kinds of people that we are supporting through these programs. As far as events, community building and networking has been extremely important. So our women in entrepreneurship community has been very, very active. We hosted 12 events this year, and we had 100, over 100 attending this year. We hosted our first awards event just last week, actually. We offered five awards to women entrepreneurs who are making a significant impact in our community, and so we're excited to continue that in the next year and expand that as well. Veteran entrepreneurs are also excited about connecting, and so we've been able to, we started to meet up with 20 in November, and there's been a lot of momentum there about bringing resources to that community with a growing male list of about 50. So, we've been able to connect with about 50 different veteran entrepreneurs, and again, that community is growing as well. We also hosted the Launch You Workshop Series. This was seven weeks this fall, providing topical and skill-based workshops, and these were presentations from local entrepreneurs or service providers who were zeroing in on very specific skills, so HR, SEO, sales, things that are really critical for entrepreneurs. And we had 17 entrepreneurs who participated in that workshop series. 82% of them are currently operating their business. So again, really targeting that, those businesses who are in that early stage in the first one to three years, and we've been very effective at targeting those folks with our programming. So, looking ahead, as we got started, you know, about two years ago, we worked with our key stakeholders and other entrepreneurs to say, hey, what does our community need? What do we need to focus on in terms of our biggest strategy and our tactics? And the first thing was building inclusive resources and education, and we have been working on that. We promote the events and trainings of our partners, including SBDC or the Chamber or other partners, and we develop programming that fits into those gaps. So resources and education has been extremely important for us in these first two years. But the second piece that was extremely important was inclusive capital access, and you hear us talking about that more and more. 89% of small business owners say that access to capital is an issue for them in terms of establishing and growing their business, 89%. So as a community, when we say that entrepreneurship is part of our strategy, we also need to consider what are all the different aspects that are crucial for success. Education is extremely important, resources are extremely important, and so is access to capital. So I'm really excited that we'll be able to spend some time with you this evening, elaborating on some of the plans that our partners have come up with to be able to meet this need and get funding right into the hands of entrepreneurs at those earliest and most critical stages. I'm going to hand it over to Doug Barrett, the Vice President of Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, to discuss some of their activities. Do you, should we do questions, or? Is that later? Move it along. Okay.
Mayor?
Welcome, Doug.
City Commissioners, good evening.
Glad to see you here.
City staff. Excuse me, I'm a little unprepared. I came in from travel and our president came down with the flu, so I'm going to step in here and update you all on a few things. One of the most important things I'm hearing reiterated tonight is equity. I kind of wrote something down as I was listening earlier, and I was thinking, we are the driving force of DEI efforts in our region in providing a blueprint for rural, underrepresented entrepreneurs across the state, and we can't win as a community until our region achieves equity. I say that to say that within this 2022 year, sorry. The first thing that we did was we secured a downtown space at the Community House, which gave us the ability to help mentor, have admin space, and work with our small business owners. We were featured in the Kansas Department of Commerce African American Commission Report that was at the state level, a local publication, City Lifestyle Magazine, published us in their magazine, giving us the exposure, and then we've also had 5,000 views to our directory. Our number one thing that was most important to us this year was our data collection project. Data is everything. Our business owners have provided us the data to know what we need to do in order to seek out funding, and as Sarah just mentioned, access to capital, competent programming for our business owners to be able to get the education and the training that they need to scale their businesses and grow. Number four, Black Joy Mental Health, which was where we have four, I think, four of them, but we have more than that right now, mental health providers that provided competent training to mental health disparities within the business community, because the challenges of some Black business owners are that they don't have the ability to get the business loans, the challenges they have with, the challenges in business, and ultimately making it harder for them to succeed. So having that mental health training and resources allows them to get the help that they need. Number one, let me start off by saying thank you to the Chamber, Network Kansas, and who was the other one? Network Kansas Chamber, and one more I'm forgetting, I remember at the end, for Black and Bankable, which was where we had over 50 participants across the state come to Manhattan with 20 one-to-one coaching sessions, which is where we had our local banks come out and explain what is access to capital. What does it mean to scale your business? What does it mean to get business credit? What does it mean to get business loans? A lot of questions that business owners had, they were able to get answered. We had banks from Kansas City, we had local banks, ESB Commerce Bank, come out and share with businesses to explain what they need in order to grow their business. Thank you to the mayor. The National League of Cities is a new program that Kansas City and Manhattan were the only ones represented in the state with your partnership with the city, where we have taken our data and we are going to use our data to get funded through the Kaufman Foundation for $15,000 grant, and we'll use that data to help internal businesses scale to where they can get funding, and we'll use that data, or use our data of our business owners to help them at the national level, help Manhattan and Black entrepreneurs gain more funding. We participated in the Inclusive Funding Network hosted by the Kaufman Foundation, which gave us exposure to the leadership in Kansas City. Growth and opportunities and partnerships. We have five members right now selling in Hy-Vee stores. One of the things that I know a lot of people are listening in right now is even listening to the K-State presentation is, how do we help people that are already here? We help people that are already here by giving the opportunities for them to grow. One of the things that I'll talk on at the end is diverse supplier programming. With this, Hy-Vee being local is giving our business owners the opportunity to scale their businesses by putting their products in stores, whether they were selling it out of their homes, whether they're selling it out of small storefronts, being at a large scale gives those businesses the opportunity to grow. Along with K-State Collaboration, DEI efforts with K-State baseball team, Coach Tang's team and the men's basketball team has given us opportunities to sit down in front of their athletes and talk to their business, to students about business and entrepreneurial ship. and talk to their their business, to students about business and entrepreneurialship. And then looking into 2023, I'll kind of go back to what I was mentioning, diverse supplier. As I listened to the presentation from K-State, it sounds like they've already pegged a few businesses that are going to be brought into that program. Diverse supplier gives the opportunity for underrepresented business owners the opportunity to get into the doors of K-State and have the ability to grow and scale as they grow and scale with their program that they're that they're developing in their edge program. So within that, if we can get on the agenda or have that in the back of our heads for diverse supplier so that business owners at the city level, even with McGowan Gordon was talking about, which was allowing businesses to be certified, to be on major databases so that when these jobs and these major entities come to Manhattan to grow and bring new opportunities, underrepresented businesses have that opportunity to scale their business and get larger paychecks ultimately. Number one, we want to hire a part-time admin employee to help with a lot of our administrative work. Our president Sheila and myself were our own business owners, and we're doing this off our own blood, sweat, equity, and volunteerism. So we need to hire a part-time admin to be able to help run those opportunities. Expand our physical space, because as our needs grow within the community, our space is obviously growing. And then also the micro and technical assistance program. We are getting ready to have our fundraiser in February twenty-fifth, our Black Business Gala. And then we will also expand the one-to-one culturally competent business coaching along with our other building partnerships. And our president will get on my case if I don't mention. Kansas Health Foundation was our other sponsor for the Black and Bankable event, so thank you for your time.
Doug, when you when you started out, you you said, we can't do something, whatever, la la da 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 da. And then at the end, you said, until we achieve equity. What what does that look like for, what do you, what does that look like to you? How will we know if we're getting anywhere close? Is it a matter of everybody will be able to access funding? Or is it, what what's, what do you, how will we know if we're getting close? What what's, I I just.
What is the metric for that?
Bingo.
Yeah. On the spot, what does equity look like? It's it's the ability for what we want Manhattan to look like, where our businesses can go to the bank. Ninety percent of our business owners, when they went to get their first business loans, went to banks here in Manhattan, couldn't get any, get any, get any funding. Why is that? Because the challenges that our businesses present, whether it's because of the color of our skin, whether it's the racial status of America. I'm not here to talk politics, which this is politics, but at the end of the day, there's challenges that really exist. And through our videos, through our testimonials, through having a seat at the table, like, we all have had dinner, we've all had supper. We all sit there to get nourishment. In order to get that nourishment, that allows us to grow, it allows us to be at the next level. If it wasn't for the leadership of Linda Morris, if it wasn't for the leadership of Summer Ot Dirks, we wouldn't be at the table to even have discussions with Darren, Rebecca, Jason, to be able to present these opportunities. When we presented these opportunities in the past, we weren't heard. So equity is what this is right now. I'm before you because I took forth the effort to join these boards, to join these teams, to be the voice of the people of Manhattan. Mayor Butler, you get it from the military, you know, one team, one fight. And we are a community, if we want Manhattan to continue to grow, equity is including all. So from the diverse supplier program to being at the tables where we were not normally heard, to being given these challenges, is it something measurable? Yes, but from what Black Entrepreneurs is is doing with everyone in this room is giving us the visibility at the state level and recognition for all to see. And hopefully, as we continue down this path, our business owners will grow, stay, and we can continue to retain that talent.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. I think you should come back more often.
All right, well, Doug alluded to the team component. Economic development truly is a team game, and as you can see, we've got some really, really passionate, involved people that are doing that. We've also got some great local resources. I mentioned this earlier, this this, our eCommunity Loan Program, which I've talked about in previous previous presentations. We made a couple of those this last year to two local businesses, both located in in Manhattan, one downtown and one over on on Fort Riley Boulevard. You see one of the pictures there from Classic Auto Wash during their ribbon cutting earlier this year. Brought all our bankers and lenders together to talk about some of these new programs. There's some great new programs at the state level through the Kansas Department of Commerce called the Grow KS Programs and specifically some loan, gap financing loan programs that are geared towards minority and women-owned businesses. So that was really exciting to see that that was, has been advanced at the state level. And we have access locally to, through Network Kansas and the Kansas Department of Commerce, to get those funds into local entrepreneurs' hands. And then Doug talked a little bit about the the Black and Bankable event. I just want to note on that that, you know, we've come a long way the last couple of years with the work Sparks done with some of these Kaufman Foundation programs. That's been a good part of my my economic development career around entrepreneurial education and the quality of these programs. The quality, I was able to sit through a lot of that Black and Bankable, that was a day-long event, is really good. And and we were, you know, I think, very proud as the Chamber to be able to support that event and support what the Black Entrepreneurs is doing in that space. So with that, we have some, we heard from multiple people that access to funding, access to capital is important. We've got some great programs through Network Kansas, eCommunity Loan, through the Grow KS Loans, to get additional funding, gap financing into entrepreneurs' hands. So let's say they, you know, something that they don't have enough, whether it's enough equity, whether it's collateral, whatever it may be to to finance the full amount of their project. They if they can get traditional bank financing, there are resources we can get in their hands in many cases to help them with gap financing, to get them across that gap where they need to go. The challenge right now is the only local source we have of, these are all matching programs. I talk about eCommunity, Network Kansas, Grow Kansas, is is traditional bank loans, which is great, but it's not always a solution for every business, especially many early-stage businesses. And so one of the things we've looked at in a very holistic approach is is what's in front of you here, developed along with some of our part economic development partners, this concept of of an investment continuum. So this is a comprehensive model, goes all the way from innovation, early-stage, pre-venture, through startup, through business growth, across a variety of different types of businesses and industries. The idea is that in some way, shape, or form, we should be, as a community, developing resources and developing solutions for business financing across all components of this of this continuum. So kind of as I look forward tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about two components of that, which we've identified as high-priority gaps that need to be filled. One of those is what's calling an Evergreen Equity Fund. This is equity investment in potential high-growth businesses. This would be a fund that's that's where the the returns off of the fund would be reinvested in the fund. So so those that are that are capitalizing that fund are doing it as a way to help grow the local economy, create jobs, create investment. The part that I want to talk about tonight is is the concept of a community fund that would ultimately support programs geared specifically towards local entrepreneurs. So this is that other source of local funding. These are revolving loan programs. These are small, micro grant programs to help startup businesses where they can be a matching grant to, very early on, to help them, help them establish some key business functions and get up and off the ground. I'm not going to read off the slides, but you can see some of those benefits that are there. These make businesses more bankable. This helps get more startups in the pipeline. It maximizes some of the tools we already have. Ultimately, what I'd like to do this evening is is conceptually talk about this a little bit. And then if there is some general consensus that this is something, because we believe that there's a role that the city can play in helping capitalize the funds that could support these kind of programs, if this is something that that conceptually they're supportive, we'd like then to come back with a with a fully developed operational plan and and work with city staff to identify how the city could support, how the city could help play a role in in developing these funds. So a little bit more about what we envision these programs being. Ultimately, like I said, a revolving loan fund would be a fund that you loan money out in relatively small amounts in the grand scheme of things, but very impactful dollars to many early-stage, small businesses. Loan money out, as it gets paid back, it goes back into a fund that then replenishes itself and gets loaned back out again and again and again. And so we see this being a very effective model in places like Topeka. We see this being an effective model in in a variety of other communities. And so that, conceptually, is what what a fund like this would support. Obviously, there's administration that would need to go into this. There'd have to be a review process, there'd have to be accountability if there's public dollars involved on the back end. And so we have a group that's worked over over multiple months to go research other communities, understand how they do these kinds of funds. We have options. Network Kansas administers these funds and helps house these funds in some communities. There's community foundations and other foundations that play roles in doing this. We've had those conversations, and again, would would welcome the opportunity to come back with a with a fully-developed operational plan or operational options and talk a little bit more about how about how we can put that in play here in Manhattan. So the request we would make or to think about at this point would be that the city plays a role to the tune of $250,000 a year over three years for a total of $750,000. That enables a couple of things. One, that would help capitalize a fund to the point you could establish a revolving loan fund that could be sustainable, right? It could, you could, you could make enough loans over the course of a year to have positive impact, impact a good number of local businesses and local startups with with shorter terms, three to four years, that money gets back into the fund and can be loaned out again. Two, there are some other entities, Kansas State University Innovation Partners being one of them, that has actually approved funding to help support these components of the of the investment continuum, dependent upon us being able to go out and secure other sources. So this could unlock some funding from some other entities that's been committed. It can also be used to leverage philanthropic dollars to support to support these funds. That's a model we've seen be effective in other in other communities. So ultimately, that's the that's the concept, that's the ask. Again, we believe that there's a great opportunity that exists for local businesses. And I'm going to wrap up with one more slide here on on some other forward-looking items, but would be happy to discuss this in more detail, answer questions. And again, we welcome the opportunity to come back to the city, work with city staff, to identify how this how this might be possible to fund this type of a program and and leverage some of the other commitments we have and the opportunities to raise additional funds and create something that's really long-lasting and and impactful for entrepreneurs in our community. As promised, a final slide, land for industrial development. You've heard this from us before. I think we're at a point where we're doing some diligence on on some specific properties. We would anticipate, obviously, any development like this for a future industrial park, there would be a role for both the city, the county, and and the private sector probably to play in that. What exactly that looks like is going to be very dependent on on the what specific property is looked at and and the results of some of that diligence and and the costs associated with it. So right now, our challenge in this number is actually twelve out of sixteen. But this last year of the sixteen industrial projects that came through us through the Kansas Department of Commerce that we had a legit chance at, not mega projects, maybe needing a thousand acres and and workforce that we can't necessarily support in this market, but but realistic projects that could could work here. We were only able to respond to four of those. The other twelve were due to site considerations or building considerations, were were something that we did not have available to submit. As I mentioned before, sixteen acres is the largest available site in the Manhattan Business Park. See, you've got some private development in a couple of different places that are working to make more developable land. But we need to find a future, a future site that that secures some things for a longer period down the road. So anticipate us that being an issue that we come back to this body with over the course of the next year. And then finally, on the building side of sites and buildings, the KEC Building over on Hayes Drive, that's a city-owned building that we have a management contract with the city to manage. It is nearly leased up. We're actually just talking with with a tenant to to kind of secure the last larger or larger available office suite. A couple, couple of things there. We really need to have a long-term strategy for that building from a management standpoint. You know, it's it's got some deferred maintenance. We've had, it's it's almost full, yet at the same time, it's not necessarily serving the original purpose that was agreed to with this body in the agreement with the Chamber, which was as an entrepreneurial center, a place to get people and then move them on out into the community. There are some really strong economic development projects that have been put into that space. Again, it's 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 generating employment. You've got, you've got companies growing in that space, making leasehold improvements. But but we need to talk a little bit more about and work on what that long-term strategy is. And then probably the first component of that's a name change. We take some flak over the entrepreneurial center component of that, and and maybe rightfully so, because that was at one time a part of a mission that was that was defined with this group. The reality is, is that is that as as the community has continued to grow, we talk about projects on campus edge, we are on Edge Collaboration District, we talk about projects in Aggieville. Those are the kind of places where a lot of these entrepreneurial ventures are looking to go. It's places they feel like they can attract talent in in active commercial districts, walkable to campus. So as those areas have become more and more of a focus for for entrepreneurial activity, starting with maybe a name change to that building, then talking about a long-term strategy is something we'd like to continue to stay engaged with city staff about and probably plan to bring that before this body in the in the upcoming year. So with that, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or or stand for any comments, and the rest of our team is as well. Thank you for your continued support of economic development in the Manhattan region, and and it's been an exciting year, and we look forward to, look forward to what 2023 has to bring.
Sell the KEC Building and put it back on the tax rolls. Because it's, it's, yeah, my wife used to work out there, and the building needs a lot of work. And if it's full, it's at maximum value probably for an investor of some kind. And it's, like you said, it's not serving the purpose of incubating businesses and moving them on out anymore. And so it's, the building's going to go down in value over time here. So I, my vote would be to investigate selling it and moving on and coming up with a new.
I concur.
Just for clarification, it is on the tax rolls.
It is, yes.
Yeah, it's it's leased out to private businesses, so it's on the, it's on the tax rolls.
Taxes are based on use, yeah.
Time we start making some money on the damn thing, because I don't think, you guys are not really paying as much in rent. So that's where we need to, yeah.
No, I think we're done with it, pretty much.
Yes, and I thank you for the input. Obviously, that's the kind of input we're looking for, because it needs to be part of the conversation.
I think changing the name is easy. Go for it. I don't know what you might name it, but while we still own it, but I don't see any problem with changing the name, putting up a new sign.
Just a comment, really like the things about helping the smaller business, the entrepreneurs, the revolving loan. A lot of the people that were complaining to me about the foundation project, the next word out was, what are you doing for the small businesses in town? And let's get something for them. And they said, yeah, we know KSU's a business in town, but what about, you know, the private businesses and the small folks? The one thing, and this is, I did talk to you about it, but this is more for staff. I would like to get some sort of EcoDevo fund statement, like what we have in the kitty, anticipated sources of funds, anticipated uses, so we can look at it. Because, I mean, I know we talked with Scorpion, and there was even thought of maybe bonding to have the money to go for, which I didn't really like that idea. Even when I went with the foundation, they had talked about a possible one and a half million EcoDevo injection on top of the abatement. Again, I wasn't keen on that. And then when we talked about the loan program, that's when I'm like, you know, I'd really like to have something I could look at as we keep having these things bounced against us to really be able to tell. And obviously, some of this is what I'm saying, anticipated. And it, and you may give us one statement, and it may change, because something, that's fine, as long as we know where the changes come from.
So Jason's going to follow up Darren with just a little bit of the, our report that we had in there, so that'll speak to some of that.
So, sorry, I had, were you done, John? I'm sorry, okay. So I, yeah, I think you have a great team, The Chamber, very thorough, lots of information. But it's all good information, so I do appreciate it. And I think all the metrics I've asked for in the past have been developed within the past three or four years. I'm sure it needed some time for those metrics to be met. And although we're anticipating Nighthawk slash, of course, Scorpion to create those 500 jobs, I suppose we can count them in right now, but we need to see even one job first before it's actual, actually realized. As far as the the small businesses and the contracts that we have, I think what we already budgeted for for this year, I think I'm comfortable signing on to that. I would like to put forth the, I I understand the proposal for the 250,000 over a period of three years. But when I look at this packet, that was in our packet, the sheet for the economic development taxes for 2023 to 2032, it looks like it's already spoken for. And it says, you know, the anticipated amount is $65 million, 45 million for infrastructure and the projects, five projects. At least I can think of the Edge District, Levy Airport, Aggieville, maybe there are other projects in there that were. in there that we're looking at. And the Chamber of Commerce over the period of 10 years will be allocated about 5 million, just from the 500,000 each year, and 800, 8 million to Scorpion, depending on what their EcoDevo packet looks like. But that is something we already put in a resolution and workforce housing for $6 million. And I don't know what's in the other funds. And I saw maybe there might be about a million dollars or something in a couple of the other old economic development funds. So I too would like to know if in the next 10 years, if this money is already spoken for, where do we go if there are requests coming in? Hopefully, we come up more than $65 million. I don't know. But the way inflation and everything is going, things are also going to cost a lot more. So I, I'm cautious about already proposing that we put that money forward till we make sure we have the funds to allocate towards that. I do appreciate Mayor Morris going to the National League of Cities and working with Sheila and the Kaufman Community Organization for that $15,000. Oftentimes, we hear about, oh, you go to all these conferences, nothing happens. You just come back. Well, this time, we got a $15,000 grant and it was just in Kansas City. So we didn't even have to fly anywhere for this one. So I think that speaks to the commitment to our small businesses and more importantly, our minority-owned businesses and the, the equity, financial equity that is so important in all of these organizations and the networking process. I do like the piece about having veteran business owners mentoring. That's often a missing link because of, you know, young, young entrepreneurs or even at any age, it's hard to navigate that territory until you know some people who know some stuff, so you can get your foot in the door. So I, I'm happy to see some of that going on. I think the metal group, you said they, you all met yesterday for luncheon to talk about childcare. I would like to know more about that. Can you tell me a little bit where they might be on the grant that was written or when that discussion might be taking place in Topeka?
The Spark Committee just met this week, yesterday or earlier today. And I know that there is a, the conversation on the health and education component, which is where the childcare piece fits, is ongoing, but there have not been programs yet within that that have been developed to allocate those funds or to designate where those funds have gone. So I think we're, we feel like that effort with the Manhattan Childcare Incubator concept is still alive. There's still, we believe they're going to be funding to support childcare initiatives around the state, but as to what exactly those amounts are going to be and when that's going to come, that has not been defined yet. But there was, I think, an additional $10 million put into that bucket at this last meeting. So the metal event was, was last week. That was a.
On last week.
Yeah, that was a, an effort to make sure that, that the elected folks in the state legislature, legislature from across our region are up to speed on some of these efforts that are going on at the community level around childcare and then link that with the issues that, that they look at, whether that be licensure or other regulatory things, funding for programs at the state level to support increases in capacity in childcare and, and make sure that, that it's a, make sure that there's a way that these local efforts can be matched with some, with some state legislative efforts to do everything we can to move that forward.
Were there other priorities discussed or was that one of the major ones?
I, I was not at that meeting. Is Mike, oh, Mike was at that meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Reddy for the question. The metal group, they heard from two experts, Kelly Davity with Childcare Aware and Melissa Rucker with the Kansas Children's Cabinet. And the notion was, as Darren mentioned, to make the 30 legislators aware of the issue. You can imagine with 30 legislators from four communities, they ran the gamut with respect to their knowledge of childcare. They all knew it was a problem. They're hearing it from their constituents, but they were just, didn't really understand yet what they can do about it. And so the conversation basically led to two big picture buckets in terms of the, the 30 legislators from our four communities. Incentives, financial incentives somehow, whatever that looks like, or regulation. And so each of our experts were able to share what that might look like. And the idea was to sort of spur conversation among the legislators, get them to thinking creatively about some potential solutions. Clearly, the regulatory component is an executive branch, right? The governor and her cabinet can deal with that. And so there's a lot of conversation underway at that level and we're engaged in that conversation through metal as well. And so that's what that was aimed at doing. Every year, metal develops a, an agenda of priorities. Childcare was, it just rose to the top very easily. So we'll continue to, continue to work it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Because I, I appreciate that. And I'm hoping when we talk about the financial capital for businesses, maybe that would also be a part of it. I think there's more funds these days than ever before for businesses. So I'm hoping that's part of the conversation as well.
Thank you.
Let me see. I have 200 partners with banks, access to capital. Let me, so I think, I'm not sure if we, I, I don't know if you're getting a committee together to talk about the, the entrepreneurial center or not. I don't know if that's a discussion we need to have now or if you expect feedback at a later time. So I think that's, that's something we, we need to continue to talk about. But I would like to look at federal and state funds also for the $250,000 for our, for, to create that capitalization of funds for the, for our businesses. I do understand the problem and I'm hoping we can find some money somewhere to help that prod it along. But I do believe the money we've invested in, in the Chamber has come to fruition in the last two or three years to see all of the key players giving very thorough presentation with lots of meat to it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from the commission?
Thank you very much. I think that we have had a thorough briefing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Who's next? Are you last?
Is there, is there emotion on that? We have to.
Yeah, you need to, at some point tonight, you need to.
We haven't had the fourth quarter report yet.
Oh, shit. There's more?
I don't think Jason gives it. He gives, he's there to do something else.
Yeah.
CBB, no, Jason covered that.
Yeah, they've covered everything they have.
Fourth quarter.
I'm not finding it there. I'm really just here to, there, there's a 2021 Economic Development Report that the city does. It's all part of the packet this evening. I was just going to touch on, on a few points. Mainly, that everybody who we did an accountability report for in 2021 is receiving the funds they anticipated. BevHub created the jobs that they said they would create. We did some work in '21 with Prime. We did some work in '21 that's highlighted within this document itself. The, the piece that I guess may, I don't know how much time you guys want to spend on this, but we put together a history. So MeadowFab, we show a balance of 877 in this report. This is a fund that obviously was created some time ago in, in the 90s and, and generated over 14 million. And it gives you just a detailed account of where all that money went within that given time and the, the fact that there is a balance there today. We did the same thing for the '02 to '12 funds. And you can see there, we don't, we don't have any available funds out of that. And a lot of it recently, we talked to you all during budget season, was moving into the bond and interest to cover project costs for a number of things we've talked about, either Kimball and Clafl, or Kimball and College intersection or projects down in Aggieville that have happened in the last two or three years, where we've suggested these funds be dedicated towards. You can also see in the 12 to 22 funds, over 27 million captured there. We have a balance of about a little over a million dollars. And once again, just kind of running through, itemized where we spent that money in the last 10 years. Given the, the nature of all these funds, we've roughly spent around $75 million in economic development funds since 95. And these three reports, they tell you in, in detail where those, where those dollars were spent and dedicated. For 2023 through '32, I think Commissioner Reddy was referencing this. This is the breakdown. If we generate 65 million, 6.5 a year is what we anticipated. But this is, this is essentially the 70, 20, 10 split that was in the question by category. We, we highlighted those, the big five several times throughout the budget process for that 45 million.
Now, is that, that 45, is that just because that's the percentage that's there and those projects could probably use that or more? So you're just putting the, putting the number in there?
Just a descriptor. Yep, exactly. I mean, commission can decide to do a lot of different things with that. There's a bond and interest fund that's supported by sales tax and property taxes. You can transfer EcoDevo in there and keep that levy and keep that sales tax amount roughly the same, or you can raise the mill levy and use those ED dollars somewhere else, or we can generate more sales tax some other way and use that ED money some other way. Inflation's obviously occurring. Our budgets this year look very healthy. We've got a healthy cash balance, so there's flexibility even in the general fund. But yes, this is just trying to give you a reflection of what the question called for and infrastructure, EcoDevo, workforce housing breakdown of that 65 million. The report then just goes on to look at all the different uses. We, we go through the application process and the accountability process, which was obviously a big part of our conversation earlier tonight. We, just all the history of MeadowFab, the '02, I think it's page 17, where we get into BevHub just kind of describing their performance. They created one job prior year, '25 and '22. So they're, they've leveraged about two-thirds of the funding and that'll be a performance-based grant opportunity for them to keep leveraging the remaining 71,500. At the end of the report is just another summary of all the tax abatements and all the different companies we've worked with. Civics Plus is still active with their tax abatement. BevHub just started their 10 years. And BevHub, if you recall, was only on the additional amount we invested out there. It wasn't for the full property value. So that, that's really the highlights of the, the '21 report. We took some action in '21, but those, those accountability reports will be more for '22. Any questions or thoughts on the report? Krishnan Ramada, my response to your suggestion was, wasn't necessarily this, but it can be. But available cash. So starting in January, we'll start bringing in money for the '23.
Yeah, maybe like a quarterly thing.
Yep.
And then if we can actually just dump these others and just have one page and,
yep.
and come up with it. Now, I guess, which is, there's one there where there's like a million dollars left.
Yep.
That was the old. So that would just have any restrictions on that? I think the county would have to agree if we go outside.
Correct.
The county.
Yeah. On MeadowFab, no. That, that's for both. That can go in Riley and Potawatomi. For the remaining million balance in the 12 to 22, would need to stay in Riley unless you want to approach them about spending.
And probably be told no.
So Jason, I like the way the businesses have laid out the, everything you laid out about compliance and anything. I would like to see some kind of structure like that to our very first discussion.
Understood.
Okay, state, depending on where all of that goes.
Yep.
Because these data points are very important and it, for future commissioners and even current commissioners, we tend to forget what we approved and what we didn't approve. So sometimes when we look back and we'll say, oh, yeah, I did. Oh, that's where they're at. So if we had that kind of a metric system for, for their ask, it would be very good for us to know progress.
Yeah. And we've been, you know, we've used four different criteria before for a business. And Civics Plus is probably the best example where we gave them a tremendous amount of credit for the investment they made, credit for the benefit package that they offered, credit for the wages they paid. And then the fourth criteria is jobs. So even when you look at Civics Plus for this year, it, the jobs aren't where they anticipated they would be. But their investment, their package, their salary brings that blended percentage into compliance. So we try to give companies, you know, credit for what they've done, recognizing 10 years is a long time to predict employment. And things happen, obviously. COVID and pandemics and shutting things down and really changing the landscape for a company like that who is multiple, multiple companies across the country and multiple buildings. So yeah, they have a different approach and a different model now than they did when they signed that agreement. We really only have another year, I believe, with Civics Plus '23 will be the last year. But they, they performed early. They couldn't perform late, but yet still received the, the benefit.
And we didn't have the foresight to think about the, that the jobs would be located in Manhattan.
Well.
Or employee.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you learn things over time.
You do. And, and remote work and all the options people have to stay home and, and really accomplish what they need in the business.
And I'm not sure they're, we're ever going to get away from remote again, to get back to in, in onsite employment.
It is why we give, I personally feel like we give such a credit for that investment, for that asset in our community. And that 13 million that went in to Civics Plus is, is an asset that I, I believe the community will have for decades to come.
Absolutely.
For a variety of purposes.
I think what I heard Yusha asked for earlier was not just a business by business on economic development, but trying to figure out how much there really is left. And by all accounts, there isn't much, but I also think that our sales tax is overperforming in some ways too. And so there ought to be some residual that would be not just gobbled up by bond and interest kinds of payments.
You're really going to have that flexibility with the '23 and beyond tax.
Okay.
We're just about done with the 2012 through 2022. So the balance that we generated was really as of October. So you're not going to see a whole lot more than that million dollars sitting there. But you're, you're right. For the next 10 years, we, we went zero inflation and we, we basically set that at an amount that it would have generated when we asked a question, which was in 2020. So yeah, it's a different number if you run out today's.
Different world now.
Yep. So we see it, I think, more as an annual budget discussion. It's, you know, economic development in its own fun, how that relates to, you know, your goals and aspects of that, that spending. The other piece that works into that in the future is how much of our infrastructure are we able to leverage with grants? We've done a really good job of leveraging KDOT on the last two phases on the North Campus Corridor, almost exclusively on one particular phase. That saved us quite a bit of money that was part of the big five total funding originally. So as we get more of those, there's a lot of infrastructure money out there. Most of them are pretty competitive, but certainly those are opportunities for us to leverage and relieve and make more funds available in some of those categories.
Yeah. And then even how you categorize, like if we wanted to put utility hookups or something in the business park, is that EcoDevo or infrastructure?
Any other questions?
You do have a request and action before you this evening to consider the annual agreements for the Chamber, for the services they provide for us. Obviously, that, we have a unique partnership arrangement. And Jason, did you want to back clean up here and make that pitch?
And Jason, did you want to back clean up here and make that pitch?
I will. Can do that. I did have one other item that I should have mentioned, and I apologize. I mentioned it to the mayor earlier. Uh, a few years ago, you made a change in, uh, the city manager and the city staff's purchasing, uh, authorization without, without a bid. And, um, I believe that went from twenty-five to fifty. Our agreements still have twenty thousand in those. Um, I don't, not necessarily the fifty, but we would like that raised a little bit. It's, it's incredibly challenging when we're, when we know we're doing a project with a certain marketing firm or we know we have, um, a certain engineering firm who's, for instance, working on a project for us on, um, um, industrial site. Twenty thousand's pretty low, uh, for that. We, we're still doing it, and we, we submit those to Ron, so he's aware of that we're bidding. We don't go through a city process, but we do go through the required process, which is accepting bids. So any consideration that you might, uh, and I don't know what was in the memo, but any consideration that, to raise that number would be incredibly helpful. Um, and again, as Ron mentioned, uh, we, uh, value our relationship with the chi- with, uh, the city. And, um, every, every, the Economic Development Fund and, and the Military Affairs Funds are matched dollar for dollar. In case of military affairs, it's two for one. Uh, and then, of course, on the CBB, we get about sixty percent of the TGT. So, um, it's a dedicated stream and, and, um, and, and it actually works to generate more TGT funds. So, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a program that, that promotes itself. And so, um, I stand to answer any questions regarding the agreement, but I did want to point out the, the request to raise that purchasing.
Yeah, in the agreement, it's fifty thousand, the way it's written in there.
Yeah, I see the, the highlighted piece. So when you say, um, it says shall be procured through a competitive process, such a request for qualifications and such. And you're saying that is some, it's not somebody you already pick and give the fifty-two. There is a, uh, hopefully a competitive bidding process involved in that.
Right, right now, anything over twenty, we're doing competitive bidding. Uh, and we're asking that that number be raised a little bit, just because there, there are a lot of projects now that, I mean, inflation and things that we have, we have projects that are over that amount. And, um, and going through the bidding process, sometimes we'll delay it or, or create some confusion in the marketplace. And so we're just asking for the same consideration that you've given the city staff for that number to go up at least somewhat. And I think fifty's the number you use for the city, but even if it, we just get a little bit of relief on that, it would be helpful, so.
So it's fifty in this agreement, so if we want something different, we'd need to put that in the motion?
Yeah.
And it's twenties.
We highlighted in the
Right, yeah, you had it.
Based on their, their request for that.
Can you give an example of, of where it became a nuisance?
Yeah, well, one, one is, um, we, uh, are, are made for Manhattan, right? So we use one firm to, because they developed the made for Manhattan. And there are some projects that are over the twenty thousand. And so we have to think about, okay, how do we, do we bid this? And is it, how do we bid it? Is it fair for some, can someone else use what the other company, their assets? And those processes where we could just go in and say, yeah, you, you did the first project for us. We can hire you to do the ongoing projects for us.
If it's under fifty, you don't need a competitive process, is that right?
Right now, if it's under twenty, you don't need a competitive process.
But this.
And we've asked for an increase, I believe fifty's what, what, what the city staff has. Um, and that would be great, but if it's, you know, even if it's just thirty, that would be incredibly helpful. Any, any additional amounts we have there can, will help us with some of these, particularly marketing firms or, or their marketing projects that we're doing or, or those, that's where it shows up. Or, for instance, when we hired the firm to do Karen's replacement, I think we all kind of knew who we wanted in our mind. And we had to kind of go through the process of at least taking bids. And we ended up hiring the firm that we wanted anyway, so.
I do have a question about that. It seems like since, I don't know, it was the memo that Ron sent, um, do you typically contract out a lot of those things? Instead of, uh, getting a committee together and hiring, do you tend to, uh, seek out consultants a lot for all of these?
Um, marketing, yes, we do, we do a lot of marketing externally because, um, I just think it's easier to do those on a per-project basis as opposed to having a full-time employee. So we, you know, a lot of the GMEP are, are, we use, we use firm, uh, made for Manhattan, we use a firm. So, uh, some of the CBB things, we use a firm. I just, I just lost the train, my train of thought. So, um, can, can you repeat the question? I apologize. It's, it's ten thirty.
Do you hire consultants a lot for some of these things that you feel like can't be done in-house?
Yeah, we, we try to use, we try to be the most efficient that we can with funds. And so having full-time employees is, is we, 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 that's our last resort. And so if we can find someone that can do the project for us at a cheaper rate than hiring a full-time person, that's the direction we're going to go. Or in the case of, say, we're working on business park identification, we've got to have engineering done to find out if the site's even buildable. So we end up hiring an engineering firm to do those, that work for us. Um, we had a situation where, where we're looking at one at the business park and we needed, and a company wanted to know specifically, could they build this building in adjacent to the runway? And we hired a mark, uh, hired an engineering firm to come in and do a new, an updated study on height versus the runway as opposed to, to asking the airport to do that, because it was an economic development project. We handled that internally. And so it's expertise we don't have, um, on staff more than necessarily it is replacing what we don't have on staff.
And you're finding yourselves, uh, doing this competitive bidding process more and more because of inflation and because of the prices that have risen.
Yeah, we're, it's two to three times a year.
Oh.
And it's not, it's not oppressive. It's just, it's just
Yeah.
Uh, it feels, a lot of times it feels unnecessary because, number one, we, we prefer local vendors. And so we, you know, we have a lot in our minds, kind of who's the expert, expert on that and going through that process. If, if that's what you want us to do, we'll continue to do it. It just sometimes adds extra steps that
I, I, I mean, Ron's authority with the entirety of the city budget is a, a bigger issue. With the money we give you, it's still over a million. But it, um, I can see raising it slightly. I don't know, I don't know that fifty thousand, but whatever the commission's will is.
There were two areas of consideration. One is the, you know, for the economic development components. And then the transient guest tax, they're currently limited to five thousand, uh, is their
On research, yeah.
On studies and stuff.
Yeah.
So that request was to raise that to twenty-five thousand. So that's kind of what our limit is for department heads for ceiling. Um, and that's kind of the role that they serve. So those are the, the two elements that, uh, we kind of patterned that after. They do, uh, uh, mirror our processes. So the example that Jason gave about they've done work with a particular firm. We've come to you on that same thing where it's going to be more cost-effective, continue to work with that firm because they've already done survey work for us or something, uh, they, that policy. So they mirror some of our purchasing policies as a result of that.
Maybe I'll start it off, I'm good with the twenty-five, I'm good with the fifty, if you want to do thirty-five.
But the city is looking over your shoulder.
Forty.
We submit, we submit our, we submit our budget
I don't think
and expenses every month, so everybody, everybody sees our budget.
I don't know. You, you support raising it?
Yeah, I, I, I think raising it's reasonable. It hasn't been, it hasn't been adjusted in a long time.
Okay. I, I prefer doing ten thousand for CBB and maybe thirty-five thousand for, for the chamber.
That, again, that would be very helpful, so.
Rest of the commission, is that?
I'm fine if that's
Okay.
So, thank you. And any other questions about contracts or?
Just whoever makes the motion needs to put that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I move, um, to receive the twenty-twenty-one Joint Economic Development Report and authorize city administration to finalize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Fort Riley Promotion Economic Development and Torabsum and Convention Contracts for twenty-twenty-three with the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce with an increase of CBB, um, funding, uh, in, uh, spending authority to ten thousand and the chamber spending authority to thirty-five thousand. Does that make sense?
We know, I think we get your
Okay.
I'll second. Actually, I do have one question. On that CBB budget, or, and I don't have the agreement up, we got the memo up. It's got a number in there, but don't we go by a percentage of what we collect for that? I know that number's based on that percentage.
So right now, that number is kind of a ceiling. Uh, if, and if we are successful in gathering all of those funds related to everything else that that fund is paying for, uh, they get up to that amount. Uh, past couple of years, we haven't been close.
So, okay, that's just verifying that, that's all.
Okay, uh, is there further discussion? All right, um, is there comment from the public? You're, there are quite a few people here. I'm sure there are thoughts. But and the presentations have been thorough. So, thank you. Uh, I'll close the public comment period. And, uh, since we have a motion and a second, I'll ask the city clerk for, to call the roll.
Mr. Ramada?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Fisher Hassel?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. The next item on the agenda? You don't have to stay any longer. It's ten twenty-two. Item F is to consider resolution number one-two-two-oh-two-two-dash-F dissolving the Special Alcohol Funds Advisory Committee and approve resolution number one-two-two-oh-two-g dissolving the Social Services Advisory Board.
Thank you, mayor, commissioners. At the December sixth legislative meeting and the December thirteenth work session, uh, we heard from a majority of you all direction for staff to work towards preparing documents for you all to consider to dissolve Social Services Advisory Board and the Special Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee. Uh, so we've put forth that in front of you all as the mayor has, uh, mentioned. Uh, it's two resolutions, two separate resolutions would dissolve each of those two boards. Want to note that within that resolution, it states that, um, absent of those committees, boards, the governing body would determine, uh, how to make those funding allotments during your budget process until we bring back a consolidated board that, uh, is charged with that task. We put together a draft potential timeline, uh, that can change for various reasons, but we wanted to put it in front of you of what it would look like to, after we, uh, or after you all, uh, potentially dissolve these two boards, what it would look like to create a new one. So on January twenty-fourth, uh, that's going to be our special legislative meeting. We are going to have in front of you a resolution to repeal and replace that nineteen-ninety-seven Boards and Committees Resolution. That's the one that governs all of our advisory boards and committees, requires them to, you know, establish bylaws, all the, that general, uh, nature of, of how that process works. We would come back on February seventh during that legislative meeting, have a discussion item with you all to talk about this new board, whatever we want to call it, what its charge is, uh, its makeup, how many people should serve on this board, some definitions, uh, possibly to consider, you know, how do we define a social service agency so that they can qualify to apply for these funds? At that meeting, we'd also like to talk with you all in establishing that target allotment for the twenty-twenty-four budget from the general fund. The social, or the special alcohol funds, you know, we kind of have those, uh, budgeted separately based on, uh, you know, that special revenue. But you all would come to some consensus, hopefully, on what you want, would want to provide, those just general social service agencies from the general fund. Uh, and then we could build that into our, uh, twenty-twenty-four budget. So if February seventh goes well and, you know, we're all coming to some consensus on what this board should be, we'll draft an ordinance to establish this new board, which will take two readings. So we would do that, uh, at the second meeting in February and the first meeting in March. And then we would turn around and open up applications for that board. Uh, I, we put out there a three-week time period, say there's nine positions. Hopefully, we get enough applications to fill that and, and the mayor can make appointments and, and recommendations. So if all goes well there, you can, uh, come back on that first meeting in April and you all could appoint the new board members to that board. Then that group could start meeting, uh, with likely me, who will be the staff liaison to that board. Uh, and I will orient them on the, the new board, um, what their charge is that you all establish in that ordinance. And then they can establish their own bylaws based on that updated nineteen-ninety-seven resolution, uh, on boards and committees. So they will, uh, you know, look at bylaws, how they want to operate as a board. They'll adopt them, and then those new bylaws would come back to you as a city commission to approve them. And that's the, kind of the standard process for any, any new board, uh, that occurs. So I, I have pegged, you know, you take a month to do that, maybe they meet a couple of times and establish those bylaws. You come back in one of those meetings in May where you can approve those new bylaws. Once all that is complete and everyone knows not only the charge of that board, but how that board is going to operate when they annually accept applications for funds and how they would deliberate and recommend those funds, then we would open up the process at the beginning of June uh, based on that ordinance, uh, you know, those bylaws, any other rules that we've established to accept applications for funding to this board. Throughout a thirty-day window there, just to accept those applications. Once you close that application period, you, you'd have, uh, and this, uh, the next timeline here is kind of, I guess you could say, the best-case scenario that we talked about where it's pretty straightforward. The board's going to meet over July and, and mid-August to consider the applications, deliberate and recommend a funding approach to you all. That then, like we would normally in June, we would come back to you all during a budget work session, uh, possibly in, in August with their funding recommendation. And we would work that into the twenty-twenty-four budget that you all would adopt. Now, if deliberations take longer, if this timeline gets shifted, we did talk about at the December thirteenth meeting that, again, back at, uh, oh, no. This February seventh meeting, if we've established a budget amount, we can just possibly plug in the budget amount to the twenty-twenty-four budget and take a little bit longer into the fall for that group to make a recommendation. And then the budget number's set, you all are just coming back maybe in September, October to allocate the funds to those agencies. So, a lot of moving parts in here, but this is kind of what, what the process looked like, looks like. Welcome any feedback today. You're just, uh, considering approving these two resolutions. That would dissolve, uh, the two boards and then start that process. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I think, I think you laid it out pretty well. I, I think the timeline you've given is, uh, workable. Uh, because we are only working with, not having to redo all of the boards. We're just doing this one as far as the consolidation of the boards. And I think when we get through the process of the makeup of the board, I definitely would prefer people that have had experience because this is the first time they're going to be doing, uh, joint funding, um, recommendations. So I think there probably are a lot of people that are still interested from both either of those boards, depending on how many we feel like should be on this board and such. But I feel, uh, this is, this is, uh, workable. I think, um, even the timeline as far as waiting till September first, especially because there will be a dedicated funding amount to work with, so it won't be as loosey-goosey as before. I think the timeline is important because it accomplishes getting the, the mechanics of getting a board appointed uh, so that recommendations can be folded into the budget in August. So that, that needs to happen. We need structure instead of just free-wheeling, so you've given it structure, looks fine to me.
I move to approve resolution number one-two-two-zero.
I move to approve resolution number one-two-two-zero-two-two-dash-F dissolving the Special Alcohol Funds Advisory Committee and approve resolution number one-two-two-oh-two-two-dash-G dissolving the Social Services Advisory Board.
I'll second.
Is there further discussion?
I just want to, uh, throw out there, I talked about this idea before of, of what, it's, it doesn't apply to the motion, but the idea of, uh, point nine of a mil of, for twenty-twenty-four budget year process, it would be point nine mil of the twenty-twenty-three budget that we currently have. So it's a known, it's point nine mil of basically last year, which is, which is this year for next year. And so.
I'm gonna get my notepad.
That way, yeah.
I'm gonna get my notepad right then.
Right, okay, so, see if you can decipher that. So, but, 'cause I think, I think according to what I have here, and one of the slides I saved is six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand was, I think, a mil last, or for this twenty-twenty-three, so point nine percent of that is sixty-three thousand less than that, five-hundred-and-seventy-something. We, we might fine-tune that a little bit, um, but just have something to, to target number to kind of think about.
And that's just the social service advisory part.
Exactly, right.
Not the alcohol part. Okay, as long as that's clear, which is part of this motion, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 I'm just throwing that out there for us to ponder.
Okay, I see. So, all right. Because there's time to do that after this motion, okay. All right, uh, further discussion? No. Brenda?
Is there, are there public comments on this item? There's. There's, there's nobody left. I'll close the public comment period and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes, and I move to adjourn the December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two city commission mission, meeting and want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. There's no public to comment, so I would ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Hassel?
To adjourn.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, I adjourn this meeting and note that tomorrow is the first day of winter, so.